Good afternoon, everybody. Today is September 20th, 2021. This is the Meramec Village District Board of Commissioners meeting. Just want to read a statement that the public participation will be offered in person and by webinar. That you can join the webinar by going to the MVDwater.org website. Looking up today's agenda, meeting agenda. And there is a link on there for a Zoom link. And you can get that link, click on that link to get access to this meeting with with video. Or you can call 646-876-9923 and enter webinar ID number 892-7358-5924. And all that information is on the agenda for today's meeting, which you can get on the MVDwater.org website, as I said. And of course, as a courtesy, Meramec TV is also recording this meeting and will be posted on their website at a later date. So at this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order at 5:07 PM. And I'd like to call everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Great, so we'll do a roll call, board members. And we only have Wolf and myself here. So we we do have John Lyons, another commissioner, attending by remote through Zoom. So we do have a quorum, but we don't have a quorum in this room. So that will prevent the board from making any official votes on any business matters today. Because you're supposed to have a quorum in the room in order to make votes on business matters. So just wanted to clarify that. So roll call, we'll go through roll call. John, can you tell us where you're calling in from? And if anyone's in the room with you?
We have five runs to drive and no, there is nobody in the room with me.
All right, and we have Wolf.
Wolf and Jane, I'm here.
And myself, Don Preventure. So so we have three commissioners here. And we also have Jill Lavoie, Business Manager, Ron Minor Superintendent, and a member from the public. So our first matter of business is the Board of Commissioners to hear an update from Jamie Emery of Emery &amp; Garrett regarding the pump test for New Well 9 that we're pursuing. Jamie, good to see you.
Hey, good to see you all. So I have some good news for you. You know, we started this pump test finally after so many months of delay. As you know, we had to delay the pump test due to the rain, the torrential rain. This was scheduled for the week after 4th of July. And for some reason, that schedule precipitated precipitation from the middle of July until a couple of weeks ago. And then we just decided that we had, we had to move forward. I mean, at that point, I think we were over 15 inches of rainfall in Meramec during that time period. And we were concerned and still remain concerned about the complications of interpretation in the data. Once we start pumping and seeing the levels of the wetlands drop down and surface water drop down as as we would expect typically in the late summer, early fall time period. But we couldn't really hold any further and decided that we had to, we had to move in that direction to make the schedule that Underwood has to, you know, relative to some construction issues and bidding issues. So last Wednesday, we began the pumping test. We're pumping 1,000 gallons a minute. We have about seven feet of drawdown, which is incredibly minimal compared to what our availability is for drawdown. And we are running well MBD2 at 1,100 gallons a minute, 24/7 during that time period. So we have some stress on it. The conductivity is substantially lower, obviously, than what well 3 is. So we're looking at about 200, you know, we're looking at about a third of the connectivity that we're seeing. We're fourth, a quarter of the connectivity that we've seen for well 3. So that's a positive sign. Iron is extremely low at 0.06 milligrams per liter. We don't have the lab results back from the other field tests or the other laboratory tests, but the quality of the water is very high. So that's all positive. We did extend the pump test one day today. We're still running it till tomorrow. We had a little backup on the Greens Pond where it releases there. We need a tobacco that's going to clean out some debris that built up. So we have cleared that out and we're running it another 24 hours to let things get, just to kind of repeat the zigzag issues that we normally see when we're pumping up there with the Greens Pond being released and then building up and released and so forth. So I think we have a good test in play. We had the state came down during the pump test and inspected it and had a long conversation with us. They're fully up to speed on what we know the issue is to be. And I think, you know, their understanding that we had to move forward with the pump test, even though it wasn't ideal conditions. But we did want to get their blessing as we went forward. So we have that. And I think at this point in time, we'll be shutting off if everything goes right tomorrow morning around 10 or 11 in the morning. And starting to measure recovery now during that time period. Well, MBD2 will continue to pump for the next two to three days at its maximum capacity. And then we're hopeful that we'll be able to shut that well off for a day to two days to three days so that we can see the entirety of the recover. But I know there's going to be some operational challenges there. And we probably won't be able to shut it off for the amount of time we want to. So that's all good news. We didn't have any breakdowns and we got things operating in the way that we were hoping for. We never got to discharge the water to the farthest end that we wanted to, but the state understood that we couldn't possibly get it through the standing water that was out there in the wetlands. So we're, I think we're in good shape. So I don't know if you have any questions at the moment, but that's really all I have to share at the moment.
We did drill, drilled already to the diameter that we want for the final pump, right?
So that's the final production well we're pumping right now.
Correct, correct. Yeah, we made that jump of faith and went straight into it. So that standpoint, that was a win-win.
Yeah, awesome. And you didn't happen to do any field tests for manganese at all? I know you said the iron's very low, but.
Yeah, so our field tests for manganese are very accurate. And so we just typically put those into the laboratory.
Okay, all right.
So that it's good, good news. I mean, the only other thing, and I will ask you at the next meeting, we're because of the delay, we're, we are over budget now. I don't, you know, I'm going to ask you to consider probably another $10,000 or $15,000 to consider at a later time. The reason why that is is because we've had our equipment in there, you know, July, August, September will be in October. That's something we didn't plan on. But I also did not provide a provision in the contract for that either. So it's not a legal obligation or anything. It's something I may come before you and ask you when we get down the road, when I see how far down, how much of the damage we have. But I'm not also, if that's something you want to hold the line on, you know, I understand that. So I just wanted you to be aware that we have a lot more expenses that we've incurred. That we will swallow some of those, but we tried our best to have the rain stop and get us to a point where we could actually do this. But you know, we're close to 90 days in a delay mode there. So but that's, that's secondary. We can talk about that at the next board meeting. The next thing I wanted to ask or talk to you about is that the permit for Mitchell Woods expires in March. And we will need to, we had a conversation with Andrew, with Andrew Coff at the D E S. We will need to get that re-permitted before March. He wants it done as soon as possible. But what that requires is now, because it hasn't been put online, it just requires us to do a 48-hour pumping test, an update on the contaminant threats, and a full water chemistry analysis of the well. So we will be doing that, you know, while I'll be submitting to you a proposal to do that at the next council meeting. And I believe that it's, you know, we're going to have to do that probably in December or thereabouts. So we can get something in probably in January for approval before March first comes along. The permits are only good for five years if you don't use them and they're good for 10 years if you put them online.
Didn't we do something like this last year for Mitchell Woods already extending that permit?
No, we, what we did was we did some PFAS testing. If you recall, we went out and did some short-term pumping, not, not the 48-hour pumping test. We were just.
For some reason, I seem to recall that we talked about extending the permit before. Maybe we just talked about it and didn't do it, but.
We did something with the wetlands monitoring plot or something, but I don't remember.
Yeah, I don't, that may have been a part of the requirement for, I think that's a requirement for the permit itself. But the renewal piece is a physical, put a pump in, pump it at the rate that it's permitted at for 48 hours and re-sample. So it's a fairly significant, you know, it's a reasonable, significant and substantive effort, which I know we haven't done. So anything we've done to date has just been to address maybe the water quality PFAS discussion, but also the permit requirement for monitoring, because there is monitoring required there as part of the large groundwater draw permit.
All right.
And then the last thing I have is that the salt mitigation. And I don't know if Ron or Jill want to discuss this, but Fidelity has, Donnie, we didn't know this, but I guess Fidelity was on the call when we did our last mitigation presentation. And they're going to, they've, they've made some adjustments in an attempt to reduce the salt. And they're going to meet with us on Friday. If I can make it, I'll be there. But they're going to meet with Ron and Jill on Friday to kind of present their plan for how they're going to reduce salt use this next year, which I think is really great. They've taken that on as an admission, so.
Good, it's good to hear. That was actually on my note here to ask you what, what you recommend, what we should be doing for that salt mitigation effort that we're undertaking. You know, I know we were, we set up the meeting we had last month, we had the meeting. And now it's, you know, what, what do you, what's the next step going forward from here?
Well, I really think we need to start working on the signage. How are we going to get the signage? I think we need to be in communication with the DOT, with the individual who will be responsible for the plowing in the sector that impact our sensitive area and have a one-on-one conversation with him before we, you know, before the winter starts throwing snow on the ground. But I think the signage is very important. And I think that we also, you know, this fidelity was top on the list because they're a high salt user at that location. And then all the other issues are working, I think, with the state and Sean to get a storage facility in place for Brian, that we can actually establish that and move forward with it. And I think that's, that's, that's really it. Those four things are probably the most important at this point in time. As well as, I want to reach out to all the, you know, all the people that didn't show up for the meeting. Or I think Ron and Jill may be in touch with all of those individuals that are the contractors putting salt on those parking lots. So that, that needs to be done too in the next 60 days.
So Jamie, I did, I did meet with Kyle last Friday to talk about signage in the wellhead protection area and stuff. And we were actually thinking, I was thinking of utilizing the source water protection grant. But that, those funds wouldn't be this year, though, would it? That would be.
Well, yeah, it would be, it would be past the time we need them, but we could use those funds in part. That's in November, I believe that's a November timeframe.
Is it Call of Fox?
Yes, yes, yeah. But I don't, you know, what I can do is, is call them and ask them, when is the, what is the earliest the money could be reimbursed? I mean, maybe it is something that could be, you know, used for reimbursement process. I don't think I've ever done that before, but I think the downside about those source water protection is it come with a lot of, you know, strings. But do you have an idea? Well, we can talk offline, but let me, let me find out if that can be reimbursable. My air claps and ringtone. But yeah, no, that would be, I'll find that out this week.
And we, we actually counted the signs every road for the well, well 2, wellhead protection area. And we came up with like 32 signs, just wellhead protection area signs. So I thought would be that many signs would have them installed as well.
Are you saying 32 proposed signs or existing?
Proposed.
All right, yeah.
They're, they're just stuck in the middle right now. So it's really not, my thought was to really delineate what's.
Boundaries, yeah.
Boundaries, so.
Absolutely, yeah, I'm fully, fully in favor of that, sure.
I think that would be great. I don't think you can have too many signs. We, we can make everybody sick of, bottom line, we want everybody to know what's going on, right?
Right.
And I think that's going to make the public aware and they're going to look at it more. And the public will be the police of all of the salt application too.
Depends on the sign, though. I mean, I've been driving about, driving past these reduced salt use area signs for, for years. And I, I never considered that they mattered to me, right? I don't think the general public would know why they matter, right? So I don't know what kind of verbiage, you know.
Educational effort to.
We need to talk about what these signs ought to be saying so people relate.
And we probably, we could do a mail-in as well after that, just, you know, have you noticed these in your neighborhood? Just do a little write-up about it.
Maybe we could put a little sentence on our bills to send to our customers and tell them to take note of sign, you know, the no, no salt restriction signs and, you know, try to abide by them and that type of thing. But yeah, all right.
If there was space on it, you know, it'd be wonderful to say something like protecting your drinking water source or source water protection, you know, or drinking water protection, something that connects the low salt to drinking water quality. And not, you know, there are going to be, you know, what we can do, Ron, is I know in, you know, all the islands, Cape, Long Island and Cape Cod and so forth, there's various signage that's down there. Maybe what we can do is take a look at what signage, just get some examples out of it and see which ones you like the best.
Definitely. And Kyle and I also talked, Kyle and I also talked about using the same pole or, you know, underneath the wellhead protection area sign, you know, limited, you know, restricted salt area, that kind of, and adding that sign as well to where, where they need to be out in the system.
Yeah, I've seen wellhead protection area signs. So if you're talking about that, doubling them up with the no salt use or something like that, or, yeah, I think.
We're just kind of talking about tripling off it and on the backside of it, exiting the wellhead protection area, just to have something going as you're going out. It'll be on the wrong side of the road, but just really delineate that area.
I think that'd be good because then the plow drivers already know. But in case they don't, or if there's somebody new and new route that they're not familiar with, then that's just another reminder of, you know, what's going on for them. So and again, I think the public will see that and they'll probably start asking questions. And that's how they can become educated too, so.
I wonder, I wonder if it wouldn't be inappropriate to go to the private landowners that have parking lots and also ask permission to put a sign in their parking lot that says something to that end. Because then the contractor who's coming in there would, would see something. I mean, it'd have to be individual permission, but it wouldn't, it would, you know, the worst case scenario is the private landowner says no.
Right.
Community minded and understands that we're all in this together. In all likelihood, he probably will, you know, or he or she will be supportive, so.
Yep, great ideas.
We might go look, definitely target the ones that actually have restrictions now. It might actually help them out as to why they do not put salt in their parking lots. And then we could approach the others after.
Yeah, the ones that are protected by the law for, yeah, right. Through the snow, yeah, I like that, that's a good one.
All right, great, good, anything else?
That's all I have for you tonight.
Yep, that's, I didn't have anything.
Artificial recharge.
Yeah.
No, but.
Question or what are you?
Well, we need to start talking. So I was bringing up artificial recharge, right? We haven't talked about that in a while. And I'm not sure who's waiting on who now. Are we waiting for the, we're probably looking, waiting for the decision which option to pursue, right?
Right, so I do have, I did get a letter from Penna Chuck for the cost of service study. I do, I gotta get a formal letter, letter back out to them to proceed with it, but then I can do that tomorrow, so.
Okay, okay, nice table. But we want to keep moving with that and all of this.
Okay, so I'm, I'm just to answer your question on that. Wolf, I'm waiting really on you to tell me to start thinking more seriously about it.
Right.
And my concern is the same as it's always been, are we washing out PFAS in the, in the topsoil right in top couple of feet of the dirt? And then what effect does it have for, for intended recharge? And is it really going to dilute the PFAS we have in the groundwater in that area? Or is it going to add to it? That's, I think, the one question we've asked for two years. And I'm not sure if anybody really knows. So I'm not complaining that we didn't get an answer on that, but that is a concern that I have.
Okay, I thought, yeah, I thought I had addressed that, but I'm, I'm very confident that the, the artificial recharge, we'd have to do some model, you know, specific modeling to conclude that. But sands not going through that step, I'm very confident that the dilution will be significant. And you would not, and this is a twofold issue. If you, I can see this being a go if it cost-effective for two reasons. One, to enhance the recharge, which would, which increase your overall withdrawal at that site to where it was originally permitted, which is a significant amount. And then the secondary benefit is the, is the dilution. Because we're talking about putting in basins that will penetrate beyond that surface soil. So most filtration will occur below the PFAS layer.
Yeah, and that's what we were thinking. If it's true that the PFAS in the soil is concentrated more towards the surface and we get that soil out of the way and do the infiltration of the river water in the, below those soils that are not as contaminated, then we shouldn't be kind of flushing the contaminated soil into the water table, which would kind of go counteract, counterproductive to what we're trying to do. And instead, we'd be diluting the groundwater there and extending the life of the filters there. So we did have a, a cost analysis done by Underwood of, I don't know, 12, 14 different alternatives of source capacity. And I think it's up to us to make a decision on which ones we want to move forward with. So we understand the balls in our court, I guess, on that. But.
Let's just point one thing out too, that, you know, I became aware if you're digging up PFAS contaminated soil, you can't reuse on-site, you've got to dispose of it like hazardous material. At least that was the case in the one I attended at Pease.
I don't think that's the plan around the St. Obane site. I think they're planning on capping it, keeping it on-site. So I'd be interested in finding out what sites you're talking about, because that's completely different than what I'm hearing.
Peace Air Force Base.
That's interesting, John.
Yeah, I talked to Al Pratt out there when I went on a construction day a couple of years ago. And that was his big headache, big headache at the moment, as I recall.
Wow.
Just from the construction at well 4 and 5 for the PFAS plant, all the material had to stay on-site. We didn't have to cap it or anything, but we couldn't remove it from site, from the site.
I can check with him again. It has been a couple of years, so I could be misremembering something, but I'll give him a call. And John, too, I, I work with Al on, we're developing another water source for the city of Portsmouth. So I'm dealing with Al quite a bit. So if I, in my next conversation, I'll ask him as well. And if I get him, I'll let you know to vice, and vice versa, if we get him.
Sure.
But, but Dr. On, you're saying that all the soils that you removed for the construction stayed on-site?
Yes, yeah. Yep, we, and the site consisted of the pit next door, which we removed some gravels, we put some organics in, back in the pit. So we've, we've moved, shuffled stuff around. So my, my thought would be, we have a place to put it, would be in the sand pit next to us.
Yeah, it'd be interesting. I think we have, we should have Kevin Walker from Flatley talking about that development up that butt St. Obane. And I know Gilbert Crossing was required to keep soils on-site. And I believe the D E S is imposing the same restriction on the Flatley parcel of not removing any soil. And they might even be taking a step further and capping some of it under the parking lot or something like that. But, you know, if, if there's a removal and disposal requirement that you're running into in, at Pease, that's kind of different than what I'm hearing, we're hearing here in Meramec. So it'd be good to get to the bottom of that and find out which is the correct approach. So the last thing I just wanted to mention too is, I think in the, it was either the July or August test results for PFOA, the PFAS testing. I just wanted to note, well 2 was, the PFOA was at 25 parts per trillion, which is way higher than it's ever been in the past. I think it went up to maybe 18 or 20 in the past, but it's normally been fluctuating right around 12, 8, 12, 10, around there. And so the last result was over 25 and that had been our cleanest well. So now that's kind of approaching the same level as, in the same realm as 7 and 8 and well 3. So, so things are shifting around out there in the water table ironically. But just wanted to point that out because I, I see the monthly data gets emailed to me. So that was kind of, kind of eye-opening. But we're treating that water anyway, so, and I'm sure Underwood will have an update on well 2 construction, treatment plant construction for us coming up. But yeah, that was all I got. Anybody else have anything for Jamie?
You gonna be out there on-site tomorrow, Jamie?
I won't be, but Mike will be down there in the morning. Yeah, but you can call me, you can call me anytime.
Yeah, unfortunately, I never had a chance to get out there. I wanted to, but I just never, I couldn't do it this weekend, so.
We'll, we'll send you some pictures.
Good. I appreciate the effort and I'm glad it looks positive. And I know you don't have a final conclusion for a little while now. So, but hopefully, hopefully, all the, the, the data in the wetlands monitoring is going to look good for us as well.
We're hopeful. We're, we'll, we'll figure it out one way or the other. This well is going to be used.
Great, glad to hear it.
Yeah, it's good. All right, thanks, guys. Yeah, it's good. All right. Thanks, guys.
Okay. Thanks, Jamie.
Yep, bye.
Okay, next on the agenda was the human res, finance and human resource review, Michelle Holden. She's not available this evening, so we'll table that and move on to the next item, agenda, agenda item.
Good. Could we maybe relay some questions for her and she can maybe address that?
Yes.
All right, you want to, yeah, you want to talk about that? Sure.
Yeah, there were just a couple of, of line items that I was a little surprised. Again, administrative overtime and field staff overtime is quite high again, where they're almost double, if not around the double of, 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 of what the percentage should be here as far as the, the budget progress goes, purchase of waters at around a 3% of the budget.
Yeah, I had a question on that. What, what was that? Did we have to, we need to penachuck water for something?
Didn't.
Is that just a meter charge or something or?
I gotta look at the timing because we did it at the beginning of the round Memorial Day. So I.
Irrigation time.
Oh, so maybe we just got the bill.
Yet may just.
That was one of the notes I had.
Yeah, it's just.
But we are getting monthly meter charges.
Yeah.
We've left the connection open if we need it, right?
Right.
Those are a thousand, a thousand dollars.
Yeah, I've seen that. I was wondering what this, this one was higher. So I was just wondering what that was involved.
Michelle planned on sending out an email to see if you have any questions.
Yeah, that's fine. That's why I figured if we just put it on record here, then she can respond later on. It's fine. And we can maybe add it to the meeting, minutes and at the next meeting and then we're good. Right? Right. I think that's, that's probably, and then account nine zero two oh four, the loan principal. I don't know. Some of these percentage columns seem a little, little awkward. It says 420%, but we don't have any actuals that I see. I just see budget, but we soon, there's nothing in the actual line. So why would it be 420% if we didn't spend anything?
Yeah.
Right? Everything is zero as far as year to date. We only have a budget. But there's 420% percent versus total budget. And there's a couple of them. It just seemed like when you look at, what is that page one of the P and L versus actual total company? Those percentages here, considering where we are in the fiscal year, 119%, 190%, something, maybe I'm missing something, but.
Well, this, this is, these first few pages are different than you had in the past, right? You recognize that.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that has anything to do with it or you're not looking at that. What number are you looking at?
This is the page one of the P and L budget versus actual total company. The rest of the pages are more aligned again. It's just, there seems to be some outliers. And then the last one is again, page one of the P and L, July through August 2021. The fines and penalties account 40401 are 10,000%. Now, the number makes sense because it's, you know, 21 where it only dollars, this is in 2020, we're at $90, right? But I want to understand where these 10,000 in penalties in 2021 are coming from. Really, what we've been charging customers penalties in that amount? Again, this is page one in the P and L previous year comparison, July through August. Account 40401 fines and penalties.
Definitely weren't charging late charges last year because COVID.
So we have accrued since then, I mean, we only stopped that policy like, what, three months ago?
Yeah, the, I mean, it's one and a half percent late charge as opposed to $5. So bigger accounts, we get bigger fines.
Okay.
Michelle can explain that better, but that's part of it.
I was going to ask too about account 40407 is miscellaneous income. That's over $7,000 versus the budget was only 833. So I was just wondering where that, what that miscellaneous income consists of. I was just curious on that. Seems to be quite a bit higher number, which is, which is good. I'm just wondering where that's coming from. Yep, that's all I had to, so. Okay. So we, okay to move on with everyone then? See. So next on the agenda is Underwood engineers and they're going to give us updates on our wells, seven and eight treatment plant as well as our well two treatment plant construction. So who we have, Peter?
Yep. Give you an update on those. So on the seven and eight project, nothing has really been done in the last couple of months due to the vessel repairs. Contractor has been on site sporadically, just addressing a few little things, but not much. The vessel is, the damaged vessel is being repaired right now. I believe you have a, the report from team in your packet on the, on the vessel repairs. And then in summary of that report is they pretty much agree with all the repairs that are going to be made and what damage they found. The one thing that they did discover that there was a weld had some, what is the exact term on that that they used? So they, yeah, on, on the weld between the, the vessel body and, and then the top. And that is something that I guess that it certainly, the weld did not fail the hydrostatic test. And they have to do tests on those welds every so often, every, you know, so many feet as a welder is welding and that type of thing. So the test that they did on the welds, we presume during the initial manufacturing was done at, at whatever intervals they were testing it passed at those, but where they, where team did a test on it, you know, during their inspection, they did find something, you know, in there. They were encouraged that it did pass the hydrostatic test. They said, then that's good. They recommended performing a hydrostatic test on it again. I told them that we were planning on doing that. And when I told them we were planning on doing that on site, they thought that was the best scenario because, you know, at that point, the vessel would not be moved at all in transportation or anything. So that, you know, that would give you your best result. So if it did pass and, you know, everything should look good. So.
Do we know, was this on the inside of the vessel or on the outside?
It was in the weld itself. So it was sort of, you know, it wasn't really inside, outside, but it was.
Well, the weld goes all the way from the inside to the outside, right? So the question is, was that fusion, was that lack of fusion rather towards inside, the outside, the middle? Was it the whole thickness of the wall?
It, I don't, it didn't really specify where that was.
Right. I noticed that too in the report. That bothers me a little bit. I understand on the inside is a challenge because of the, the liner and the coating. But if it's on the outside, it should be no big deal to get it fixed. So is that something we can find out where exactly that, that lack of fusion was? Was it inside, outside? Because the other problem is if it's on the inside specifically, I'm worried about corrosion. Right? You have a crack now that you can have water penetrate and corrode, right? Maybe even erode depending on where it is, depending on how much fluid movement we have in that area, right? Not just corrode, but erode. So, and again, this is all nice and dainty, but the warranty is like one, one year, right? So by the time we find out that this is an issue, it's going to be years down the road and it's going to be on our dime. So I'm a little surprised that this was not discovered during the original manufacturing because you would think a pressure vessel is being 100% inspected and, and well certified.
It, it is not being 100% inspected. And that's, that's what we found out that is being, you know, tested at a certain, you know, linear footage of welding. I guess that the welder changes and they, they got to start the, you know, the testing again. But if it's the same welder, then I forget how many feet they, you know, they have to go before they, you know, test the weld and that type of thing. So I can check on that and find out where, where that lack of fusion was. Was it an inside, outside or in the middle of a weld?
You're feeling more and more like buying a lemon. It really does. And those are cracks or what do they call it? Yeah, the coating for both had cracked on the inside due to the impact. Is that area of the coating going to be repaired or not? Because it wasn't.
Yes, it is.
It is. Okay.
Yeah. Hey Bill, do you have the pictures of that, Wolf, as part of your packet?
No.
Yeah.
Okay. And there were, there were, there were some pictures that went along with that.
I don't have those. The other question that I asked a couple, well, at least weeks ago, if not months, what material is that vessel? What kind of steel is it? You know, is it high carbon steel?
That was, that was reported somewhere.
Yeah, we, yeah, we did note that. I could, I could pull it back up again.
Okay, it's, it's here. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I need to look that up.
So Peter, there's a, there's a table. What's it say? Appendix A here. It's, it's right in the top of the section 2.0.
Yeah, yeah.
Talks about static head being 6.8 PSI for the shell and 1.6 PSI for the top head. The design data summary.
Yeah, I, I.
Why is that? That just seems like extraordinarily low.
Yeah, I'm not sure what, what, what that is to tell you the truth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I know we're not, we're not pumping into the, the distribution system here. We're just going into a, a storage tank. But, so I know we're not, we don't need like, you know, 100 PSI or something, but
Yeah.
That, that just, I didn't understand. Those numbers didn't make any sense to me there.
Yeah.
Oh, but then it does say design pressure 75 PSI. So.
Right. And when they do their height, when they do the test, the requirement is to test it at 1.3 times your design pressure. So they would be testing that at 98 PSI. So if we were testing that at 98 PSI and when we're going to be running the vessel here, you know, depending if you're top or the bottom of the vessel, but it's, it's.
All right.
You know, somewhere going to be in the, you know, that 30 range. I think, I think we are estimating possibly 40 at the very most.
Right.
Yeah. So we're not, you know, it's not, I just pointed that out that we're not looking at operating this thing at like 70 PSI just below, you know, the design pressure. We're, we're well below the design pressure. And that's not to say that they, you know, whatever they're doing for repairs is not right. But I'm just, I just want to point that out that we have that as a safety factor in whatever we decide.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that static head, those must be just the weight of the water over the height of the vessel. That's probably all that is.
Yeah.
All right. I understand that then.
Okay.
So everybody still on track to get delivery? What was it? November we're talking about?
Yeah. So one of the things that we're running into is the actual interior coating material. And the raw material is not readily available and they're having a hard time with that. So they are debating about shipping the vessel without the interior coating on it and then coating that on site. Okay. And that is really not too, too much different than when they came out to four and five. I don't remember that. There was some, you know, interior damage of the coating and we had then come out and, you know, do the repairs on that. Obviously this is a larger area for repair. But the contractor would be looking to do that just so he can get the vessel here sooner and be able to get the building closed in sooner.
Is the same oversight protocols or whatever on that coating, i- is, is that acceptable to do in the field? Just as well as in, in a controlled environment and in the shop or something though?
Yeah. So they're, they're shipping out, whoever, you know, the tank manufacturer will be shipping out their personnel to do those repairs.
Yeah. And all the equipment to apply the coating is, is, can be done on, in the field here as well as in the, in the, in the workshop over in the warehouse where.
I believe so. And I can verify that if they are going to be going with that approach.
I guess if, if everything else is the same, then I'm in favor of doing something that gets the tank here sooner. I don't know if you think that way, but as long as the application of the coating is not compromised in any way by doing it here in the field.
Yeah, and on the, on the four or five, when they came out and did the repairs on that, you know, we ended up having a certification letter, you know, that, you know, you know, that the repairs were done to, you know, to their applicable standards and stuff like that. So we can certainly ask for that same thing too. That was not a problem to get. They didn't balk at that at all.
Okay. Anybody have any thoughts on that? Questions at all or?
I would leave that to the advice of the engineers.
I, I don't see being any different, but.
Right.
So like you can put it in a spring booth or anything.
All we don't even know is UV hardened or is it solvent or what it is. We don't know, right? So there's no way for us to decide that. So is it a powder? Do you know what kind of coating that is? Is it UV hardened? Is it, is it, is it solvent? Is it?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the shop drawn on that right now. I forget what, so we did, you know, on a sort of related note, we did get a force majeure letter from Kinsman for the, the well two vessels saying that they cannot get that material or, you know. So I'm guessing that the quantity of material that we need for seven and eight, they have, you know, small amounts, you know, at the shop, but not enough to do for vessels. So they are looking to use a different interior coating on that. And where we asked them to do a comparison between their proposed coating and the, you know, you know, their initial proposed coating and then their new proposed coating. And we're waiting for information to come back on that.
With John, I don't think we have the information to decide this. Not that we could today.
So I will follow up with them on the lack of fusion. So your, what your comment was, Wolf, you were just, the lack of fusion and if there was any, you know, cracks that were close to the, mainly the interior surface, but also the, the exterior surface of that, the vessel. Is that correct?
Well, I mean, if it's interior, then it probably is an issue to repair it because the coating is already in place, right? So it would, it would further delay the vessel if we were insisting on repairing that. If it's on the outside of the vessel, the only thing that gets disturbed is paint.
Yeah.
Right? But in either case, I'm worried about corrosion. Wherever you have a crack in steel, corrosion is waiting to happen, right?
Yeah.
So.
What does lack of fusion mean? Does it mean there's a separation of?
Yeah, you basically your plates, the welder is normally supposed to basically um uh melt both plates and then. Fill it up with whatever uh rod or wire that you use and and create that continuous bead, right? And and.
So it didn't stick to one.
You basically have no separate, no, the the crystalline grain doesn't separate anymore. It becomes one grain.
Right.
Right? And here that didn't happen. So either the the two plates never basically, you know, get fused with each other. Or one of the plates didn't fuse with the bead. And that means you have a crack.
Yeah.
Now, that might be microscopic, but it's nevertheless a crack, right? There's there's crystal patterns in the steel that don't touch each other. Although, you know, didn't didn't bond with each other. So, yeah, I mean, then again. Erosion may not be an issue because it's inside the media and there's not enough. Uh, current going on, right? And and turbulence is going on for that to be an issue, but corrosion.
Well, if it fits in the headspace of the tank above the media, it could be a lot of turbulence in there.
And I just don't know.
Yeah.
And again, if it's on the outside of the tank, it should be fixed. Somebody grinds it out whilst it paints it done. If it's on the inside, then it's a bigger decision because the coating is gonna be.
And that goes back to the. Uh, now that they're welding onto the tank, it's the whole issue of the repair staff.
Am I getting my tanks mixed up or did Peter say that we're coming to recoat the whole thing onsite anyways?
Uh, that's the exterior. I believe they're gonna be doing that.
Oh, I didn't realize it either.
Yeah.
I thought you were talking about the interior.
Yeah, me too.
The coating is. Yeah, I mean, do I have it wrong? You're talking the interior coating, correct? They're not having, they don't have the.
Yeah, the interior coating is the one they don't have. That's the one that they're short on the material for the interior coating. Yeah, sorry about that.
So even if the weld's inside and they have to fix it, they're gonna recoat the thing anyways. Just fix it first.
Yeah, and 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 yeah, then the question is, so they're. They're repairing uh portions of the inside. I'm just trying to look for pictures right now. They're portion repairing portions of the inside where. The actual, and you could see that from the prior pictures, you could see a little cracking in the um. Um, in the coating surface, right? You know, so that that's where we suspect that there was some kind of deformation of the tank. Um, and then it it had those little cracks in it. So there that part is all getting scraped off and they're repairing that. Uh, but that is in a slightly different location. It's close to, but it's in a slightly different location than the um. Than that subject well that we're talking about.
Well, I mean, we could just put it in their court, too, and just say, hey, this is what the report finds from team. Fix it. Tell us how, tell us how you're gonna fix it. We'll approve it and then you can fix it.
Yeah. And now that it's identified and they have to address it. Okay.
I can't see, uh, that's picture is not in report. I thought it was. That's a bit in something else where they actually had um, looks like they they did prep work on the exterior of the vessel already. Yes, I'm I'm not locating that, sorry.
All right, anything else on the tank vessel for well seven and eight or um?
Oh, yeah, here it is. I just found it now. Can I can I share?
So, yeah, you're panelists.
Okay. Your screen. It says host disabled participant screen sharing.
Okay, now try Pete.
Okay. Can you see that?
Yep.
Yep.
So I'm not sure, you know, where it says the. You know, the body to the head, I think I I think it's. I don't think this weld here across the top here, can you see my cursor going across?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not sure if that is the joint. I can't really tell if this is curving around as as the. As a top of the tank compared, you can see this one down here that they're repairing that one. Down at the bottom of the tank. But that's what they had. They had those prepped right there.
So there might be a weld that's not quite shown in that picture?
Yeah, there might be. It just um. You know, these are the ports right here. These are, you know, so this is the bottom of the tank here of legs, right? And then these are the bottom of the ports that are supposed to be. You know, twenty five, fifty and seventy five percent of the media. So that certainly could be that top.
Yeah.
That top, you know, joint because it certainly makes sense, I guess, because this end of the weld is that's. Where initially hit the the bridge right there. So it looks like they did, you know. You know, took the coating off and recoat that portion of it. But I can check on that and get back to you.
Okay.
Okay. So I'm back.
So um moving on to well two, is there construction going on out there?
Yeah, it started, you know. Like the first of the month, you know, what they did. Um, so they are, uh, they have cleared, they have. Um. They haven't done the whole site, but they definitely have done a lot of, you know, most of the area at the treatment plant building. They have um. Uh, stumped it, they have stripped the loam and they have excavated for, you know, the foundation walls and they are planning on. Uh, pouring uh footings of the um, the GAC filter room by this Friday. And I asked them, I said, you know, how do you feel about? You know, getting, this is at our our project meeting that was September ninth. And I said, how do you feel about, you know, getting the building complete? And ready for the vessels to be delivered on January, I mean, December fifteenth is when. That's the ship date for them right now. So if you're shipping on December fifteenth. You know, you figure a week or something that's gonna be, they're gonna be delivered just before Christmas, you know. Um, so he says that he feels pretty good on that, you know, he wants to concentrate on the. GAC room because it's a lot easier. If he has to uh tent that for cold weather masonry, it's a lot easier to do the lower walls compared to the higher walls. But his site sub is the same sub that does the concrete work. So there's not a lot of coordination that has to happen, you know, between two uh subcontractors. So he feels comfortable that they can, you know, get that uh to work and he can. Have everything ready for the vessels to be, you know, set probably right at the end of the year or the first of the new year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are we are we still on schedule for what was the completion data in this? The end of twenty twenty two?
He had, they had um. I think it was a, I get the book right here. Hold on a second.
Yeah.
Oh, it's it's well before the end of twenty twenty two. And so, yeah, they had um four hundred and twenty five days. You know, to complete that. So that's, you know, that's that's like fourteen months. And they, so they signed the contract at the end of June. So if you figure it's last the end of August of. Two thousand and twenty two and right now. He's looking at being ahead of that schedule and possibly being online for June of, you know, twenty twenty two. And we'll have to see how things work out because, you know, we're hearing this from, you know, different projects of, you know, material availability and that type of stuff, but.
Yeah.
That's his goal, I believe.
I guess I thought they were gonna start construction like in the. Early summer and late spring and I'm kind of surprised to hear that they've only been in there for a couple of weeks now.
Yeah, so they um, and that was one of the things, they they got delayed. They were supposed to start um. At least they were initially, once we signed the contract, they said, okay, we're gonna start August first. And then, you know, you know, he can't start his work until he gets his SWIP, you know, completed as a stormwater protection plan. And then also we require a groundwater protection plan. So they have to know, you know. You know, storage of chemicals and all this kind of stuff. And we have, you know, there's requirements in there that those shop drawings have to be submitted. And approved before you start your work. And their subcontractor took a while completing those. Um, so they didn't start to really the first of September.
All right.
Yeah.
Want to make sure we remind them of that when they come and ask us for an extension for some reason unknown at this point. But with almost a hundred percent surety that that's coming, because it always does come.
Yeah, I know. And and we we knew that and we did document that in meeting minutes, you know, why the delay was there.
Okay.
Yeah. But there, but even with that delay, they're still planning on completing it before. You know. Their completion date, so.
Yeah, no, that's that's good to hear. All right.
So time will tell and and we'll keep you updated on that. You know, if we're just starting out and hopefully the. The fall is good weather and they can be moving ahead as they planned. Because with a tight schedule like that, you know, there's probably isn't that that much room for, you know, a rainy fall, you know.
Yeah, and those vessels are not a thick diameter, right?
Twelve feet instead of fifteen, is that right?
Yeah, so they're they're um, yeah, so the, so we have three different types of tanks there. So we have a. The four, five or twelve foot diameter and they're high pressure rating. So they have a a thick steel on it then. You have uh, you have um seven and eight to fifteen foot diameters, but it's the lower pressure. And then, you know, seventy five and then these vessels are a hundred and twenty five PSI. That's a twelve foot diameter, so.
Cause less chance of fitting.
Oh, yeah, definitely. The the delivery is gonna be a lot easier on these, yeah. That's gonna be just a timing thing. We're not gonna have to worry about. Uh, bridges or anything on with these.
So theoretically, we should have three feet of additional clearance if they take the same route.
Uh, yeah, but they they uh they won't use the same.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, the low bed that they use is actually, it sort of cradled it instead of sitting on top of that, you know, because it's so close to the road.
So, yeah, that's true. Good point.
Yeah. But they are, they don't, they won't have the problems of. Of what they had with fifteen, you know, the fifteen foot vessels trying to, you know, where you can drive and that type of thing, so.
Right. Any other questions for Peter on um on well two treatment plant? All right, seeing none. Um, I just wanted to um. Since you're here, I had notes on here is a couple of action items, twenty four, thirty seven and forty one. Let me just go find those. Um, I think they were related to um. To Underwood in some capacity, so I just wanted to see.
Okay.
Uh, get back here. Yeah, cost of service study did um, oh, did you have information on that?
So, yeah, I already.
All right, we'll we'll cover that when we get to this. I just wanted, I didn't know if Underwood had to report on that. Um, let's see, what else do they have here? Um, there was a action item about for the commissioners to think about decision criteria for moving forward with. The alternative water sources evaluation that Underwood did. I guess I'm wondering, is there, I don't know if you were really involved with a lot of this, Peter, so. But uh.
I know Keith really did, you know, I I, you know, I followed what was going on, but he's the one that really put all that together.
I guess I was just gonna ask his advice on what he thinks the next step should be for us to try to. Establish some criteria to make decisions on which of those alternatives we want to move forward on.
Okay.
Um. So I don't know if, do you want to?
Yeah, we're gonna start a Teams meeting, but I thought that was the whole.
Okay.
We were waiting for the information.
From the uh from cost of service, yeah.
Before we make any decisions.
All right, okay.
So we'll have that back. We can have a put together a meeting.
Okay, good. Um, and let's see here. Oh, yeah. And then the last item, number forty one, there was um, we had a question here or an item about um. The review process of water allocation uh from requests. Uh, from the planning board and and MBD's ability to monitor those allocations. And I don't know.
That may be a better question for Tom. He usually does our our reviews.
Okay. All right, so um, let's remember to. Come back to that, I guess. And Tom, I also had another question about the corrosion control. I think you and I and another. We had a Zoom meeting because I had a few questions and I know we went through all that, but I don't know if the rest of the board, we we didn't. Cover the corrosion control report at a meeting yet, I don't think. It might have been on one of our prior meeting agendas. I know we missed our August meeting, so maybe it was on that agenda, but. I just wanted to make sure we didn't forget about that one. There was a corrosion control report that's out there that. I think the commissioners, we want to get together, whether it's a workshop or maybe we have time at one of our next meetings. To go over that report, but um, that's all. I just wanted to make sure it didn't get lost.
Okay.
So I guess if that's it, then if no one has any other questions for Peter on well two, we can move on.
Yeah, I just wanted to, before I signed off, as I see an item number seven down there, open house for well seven eight.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, a four or five rather.
Right. Do you um?
Or is that, is that any, you know, any, is that just something in town? Do you want us to be participating and?
Yeah, I think we'll we'll talk about that. And if there's anything we need from you on that. I, well, you were at the last one anyways, right? We had one there already, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll we'll let you know, I guess, if there's anything. I don't think we have any questions for Underwood that I'm aware of.
Uh, so if anything, it'd be if we, it's more or less to try to figure out if we're gonna have one.
Right.
When we're gonna have it and then the same level of of commitment what you did at the at the last open house.
Okay.
Be looking at.
As long as Dave's cooking, I'm there. That was fantastic. He's listening to it, so.
And then uh then the last thing is the um. The PFAS results that came in and the new graph we sent out. Did you, do you want to?
So the board doesn't have those because we just got them.
Oh, okay.
Right, uh, this afternoon, this morning, I believe, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we we are gonna need to discuss, probably have a a meeting, uh, Teams meeting or something to uh start looking at change out.
Right.
Okay.
When we want to do that, so.
Okay, so that'll be later. Okay, yep. Okay, I just wanted to make sure we weren't missing anything before I left, so.
All right. So I think Tom's on the to cover the next agenda item, right, which is the uh. Discussion with Flatley uh for the proposed uh site plan mixed use. Um, so if that's all you have, Peter, then um.
Actually, can I just, before I sign off, uh, I just don't wanna, if I had control of the screen, I don't know, I don't wanna ruin anything.
You're a co-host. I didn't make you the host, so.
Okay, so I'm all set.
We're gonna shut you off.
Take care, Peter. Thanks.
All right, yeah, bye.
Thank you.
All right, great. Uh, yeah, so moving along, um, I believe we have um. Kevin Walker on uh for Flatley Corporation and we're gonna be talking about the proposed mixed use. Uh, at six eighty five DW highway. Um, and we have Tom Page from Underwood Engineers. Um, and there was a review for a wa- a request for water allocation, so um. I'll, I guess I'll let maybe Tom. I'll, I guess I'll let maybe Tom uh, start on this because you you did provide us with a uh, report.
Yeah, I can, I can talk like a little bit here first and um, uh, I haven't I don't think I've had the opportunity to meet, meet all of you on the board uh, recently here, but I've been uh, working with uh, Ron and Joe for a number of years on some different things and in Merrimack and involved in a number of these uh, development re- reviews, including the original one uh, that was done for first phase with the Flatley for the apartments. So the review we did here really built off that, trying to do the same approach and and we tried to do all these reviews uh, uh, pretty consistently. And in the, in the draft review letter um, that we've done, you see, we've summarized uh, the proposed development uh, that uh, that Kevin will talk about um, and uh, the the water demands. And there's a couple of things we do in the review. We look at um, what's the total impact uh, hydraulically on your system, your ability to provide the water uh, for domestic flows, potential fire flows. And then we looked at the, we look at the impact on supply. So so how much does those, does that average water demand at, or max day demand add to your um, or existing demands? And do you have the dis- supply to provide it? And then finally, we touch on the um, system development charge um, and some further recommendations uh, um, to uh, um, you know, for final approval of the, of the connection. You want me to, I can, I can summarize briefly what uh, what we understand Flatley's proposing at this time, or if you, you know, Kevin wants to talk about it too, but I'll 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 just say we understand it's a uh, there's, there's five apartments that exist now and they propose, we understand they propose to build two more apartment buildings, just like the five that exist. And there's also three commercial flex buildings. I just know there's three different buildings. Each of those has multiple units uh, for commercial use and in another commercial building referred to as a high bay building. These are a little further north uh, of the apartments um, along the uh, DW highway. And and based on the um, uh, design average demands, that would add, that would have potentially about eighteen thousand gallons per day in additional demands. And uh, there is an, there's an existing development agreement that Flatley has with MBD. Um, and on the basis of this, this would uh, uh, you would, you would presumably amend that agreement to uh, add on these additional um, flows here. Uh, Kevin, do you want to talk a little bit more about the proposed development?
Yeah, feel free.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, so uh, to- tonight we're, we're getting, we're to a point now on this whole project that we're starting to look at the remainder of the site in completion. Uh, we're here tonight for uh, uh, like Tom said, the two apartment buildings, hundred thousand square feet, what we're calling like flex warehouse space. This is just small pods, uh, twenty-five hundred to four thousand square feet. Uh, the total in the three buildings is around a hundred thousand square feet. And uh, that's right in front of Saint Obane and a hundred and twenty thousand square foot uh, high bay warehouse, which is directly north of Saint Obane. Uh, so along that northern boundary. We've gone, you know, I've actually been working with uh, Ron and Tom on this for a few months now. Uh, just trying to get together, what is this site gonna need as a whole when all is said and done? Uh, like I said, we're we're getting to a point where we're, we're, we're gonna have to put water lines in. They're gonna have feeds off of it for certain projects. And we're, we're trying to identify those as we go along. So within uh, Tom's report, there's actually a plan in there that kind of shows what we're anticipating to be the overall uh, water line layout. Uh, that said, for tonight, we're just looking for two services for the apartment buildings. Uh, we're looking for uh, the water line for the uh, the flex buildings out in front of Saint Obane. And that will also uh, serve the uh, high bay warehouse. We do have a roadway proposed uh, that was just conditionally approved by the planning board that actually runs behind Saint Obane. Um, we're probably gonna come in within the next couple of months, if not sooner, to uh, to you guys at the board uh, to get uh, that one line approved. Um, but basically, the improvements, aside from the apartments, is basically a twelve inch main uh, that will come off the existing twelve inch uh, that comes in off a DW that feeds uh, the Saint Obane property. And loop that twelve inch main essentially around Saint Obane and back out uh, by the Saint Obane entrance on DW highway. So it'll be one big loop there. Part of uh, Tom's report talks about extending the twelve inch now from the apartments to that big loop around Saint Obane that I'm, that I just spoke about. And we're just not ready to do that. We're not sure what's going exactly in that spot. So I don't want to put a water line in just to have to rip it up and move it. It just doesn't make sense at this point. Um, it's not necessary at this point either, as far as water flows and whatnot. So it's not really a big deal. We we acknowledge it's something that's gonna be done in the future. Uh, we've acknowledged that uh, from the start. Uh, so we know we're gonna be doing that in the future, but like I said, tonight, we're looking for the two apartment buildings. The hundred thousand square foot of flex space and that high bay warehouse. The only, the only thing, excuse my dog. My wife just drove up and my dog's about to.
We know that.
Okay, dog. You know what it is. Go see her. Go to the door. There you go. Get out of here. Um, the only, the only thing I wanted to discuss with the board is when we came in with the apartments, um, we didn't have any actual flows, so we used a hundred and forty-five gallons a day per unit. And it came up to thirty-five thousand gallons a day. Since that time, we've had uh, actual water usage readings that I, that I've gotten from MVD. And the total for the site, uh, the apartment site isn't thirty-five thousand gallons. It's actually uh, eighteen thousand four hundred. So it's actually sixteen thousand six hundred gallons per day, less than what we anticipated. Based on those flows, it's roughly, I think it's uh, about thirty-six hundred gallons a day per, per day per building. So that would come up to roughly seventy-two, seventy-three hundred gallons for the two, two apartment buildings. Uh, we're in agreement with the cut, with the numbers for the flex space and the high bay warehouse. If you total the numbers that I have put together with the actual usage on the apartments, we're at thirty thousand one hundred and seventy-nine gallons per day, which is the apartments, the anticipated uh, additional two apartments. A hundred thousand square feet of flex, a hundred and twenty thousand square foot high bay building. All totals thirty thousand one hundred and seventy-nine gallons a day, which is still almost five thousand gallons a day, less than what we originally uh, uh, were approved for. I don't know if the board would like to do anything with that or or not, but I wanted to just point that out that we're far under the usage that uh, that we were initially approved for.
Excuse me. Uh, when, when, when you make that statement, uh, what is the occupation rate right now of these buildings?
It's a hundred percent.
It is?
Yeah.
For the whole timeframe that you're quoting?
Yes.
Thank you.
So you're only using, the only thing you have built out there is the residential component Gilbert Crossing, right?
That's correct. So it's the five, five apartment buildings and the clubhouse.
So you're kind of using that use, that past usage data to make projections for the two new apartment buildings that you're building?
Yeah, that that's what I'm going on.
And you're, what are you still using the um, what numbers are you using for the flex building and the high bay? Is that based on design flows from other sources then?
So we have a s- very similar building to the high bay, uh, to the uh, flex building. Uh, in a different town, so we took those water, it was a smaller building, but we took those water readings and we uh, translated up uh, for the larger total amount of square footage for uh, for these buildings. And uh, the same for uh, the high bay building.
So that I assume that that's probably um, it's pretty specific to whoever the tenants are, right, as far as what kind of business they do, if they use more water demand than than others. I I think residential is probably more consistent where your, your commercial is probably gonna be up and down depending on who the the tenants end up being and what their business is, is like, I would assume.
So in our, in our flex buildings, we basically have a small little office, maybe three hundred square feet or if it's even that big. And and the rest is basically a big garage. Um, big garage or, you know, translated into a warehouse type area. So I don't, I don't really anticipate much different in the way of water usage there because of the spaces aren't big enough for a large water usage. Now the high bay building, you know, i- it depends based on the numbers that I got from uh, I think it was an Amazon facility um, and another warehouse that uh, that we looked at. If, if it's similar to something like that, then we're fine. If it's something that is something that was water producing, that they want to put in a huge brewery or something like that, obviously, that's, that's a different story. Um, at this point, we're not a hundred percent sure what it'd be used for. Um, we're planning for typical warehouse, uh, you know, loading and unloading and distribution, that type of thing.
Yeah. Tom, what, what was used in the uh, in your analysis? The, are those values that Kevin just reported consistent with what, what was in your um, in your report, or are those numbers different?
Yeah, yeah, the um, uh, the original agreement uh, for the first phases was um, you know, based on thirty-five thousand gallons per day. And that's, the, and the basis for that is really a a hundred and forty-five gallons per day per unit. And that was estimated based on the number of um, uh, one bedroom and two bedroom units. Um, you know, for mostly for, for single family home developments, we've looked at, we've been using two hundred and seventy-five gallons a day in Merrimack, based on the uh, typical single family home usage. So we've already brought the flows down uh, quite a bit based on these being apartments and they tend not to use nearly as much water as a, as a um, uh, as a single family home would. Um, you know, other developments in town, we've been using the full um, two hundred and seventy-five gallons per day per unit. Um, so we, we feel that it's, it's, it's consistent to use the same uh, usage um, right there as, as before to, to at least uh, to uh, to be more consistent and fair with the other developers that are, that are going on. And and I think uh, the other benefit Kevin is that is by paying that you, you are allocated more water usage. If you, you try to get it in under what you already authorized now, you are, you are, you're kind of limiting yourself too. So you wanna, wanna think about that. You're not, you're not buying any additional water that you may wish you had down the road. So it's.
Yeah, I, 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 I agree with what you're saying and and that's, you know, part of, part of what I was gonna follow up with, and I'm glad you, you know, you said it before I did. Was that, like I said, we're gonna be back in front of the board at some point in the future for whatever's gonna be built directly north of the apartments. Uh, plus some water usage for the area around in the, the rear of Saint Obane. And and of course, the board doesn't have to answer this now because that's not what we're really here for at this point, but you know, I'd just like the board to maybe put some thought into down the road, if it turns out that all of this water usage is, you know, pretty much consistent to what I had mentioned of the actual usage. You know, we, we will do what uh, Tom has recommended, a hundred and forty-five gallons per day per unit for uh, for these, for these other two apartments. But if there is a big difference in the future, you know, at that point, can we say, all right, well, we've kind of got this kind of banked, if you want to put it, put it in those terms. And can we use whatever's left over uh, for portions of the site? If not the remainder of the site, it might be enough for the whole shooting match at that point. Um, again, I'm not looking for an answer from the, from the board at this point. I'm just, just asking, but maybe put some thought into it uh, prior to me coming back uh, for the next uh, phase. Thanks.
Yeah. So I think one of the questions that probably a lot of the board has is probably related to irrigation. I know the report said that there were no irrigation demand assumed in the report in several places. So does the numbers that you've got from uh, for the existing water demand at Gilbert Crossing? It, well, first of all, is there irrigation at Gilbert Crossing from MBD system?
There, there is irrigation and it is included in those numbers.
It is included in the one forty-five?
It's included in the, the total that I, the eighteen thousand four hundred.
All right, so.
The actually, actual usage.
So that one forty-five number, that's, that's the value?
Well, let's.
Yeah, I guess, uh, yeah, maybe to clarify the um, he, he, we didn't assume any a- additional irrigation flows beyond the one forty-five gallon per day per unit. And, and it's, it sounds like one forty-five gallons per day per unit is enough to cover whatever currently he's doing for irrigation, so.
Well, to make that statement, you would have to know what, I, I don't know what data you're using. If you're using the data back from the, the initial inception of this, if you're, if you're counting in the eight months that there is no irrigation and averaging in with the four months that we do typically irrigate, then that's, that's not a valid number because, you know, we need to know what the peak flow is gonna be in the dead of the summer when irrigation's being applied for four months.
Mm-hmm.
And not dilute that value with the eight months that there's no irrigation.
Right, right, right. I understand.
Because we need to supply the water for maybe just those four months or even just a few weeks out of the summer. That, that's the whole problem with this whole situation is because we're supplying water to new developments, we have to shut everybody's irrigation down in the whole town. And that's, that's, that's the problem. So I, I, it, to me, it's important to know what you're talking about for domestic use plus irrigation. And and I think that's the number that we need to use because it, it's the peak here that we gotta deliver the peak and it doesn't really make sense for us to look at all the other numbers in the middle of the winter. You know, we can shut wells off. We have more water than we even need. But for three or four months in the summer, that's, that's where the bottleneck is. That's the constraint. So, but if we're not looking at that, then none of this makes sense to me because we're not looking at the worst case scenario that we're obligated to deliver. And if we can't deliver that, then we have to shut the whole town's irrigation off. And that's where that's where we get a lot of problems going because of that, you know?
I just have one more point to that, Tom. So, and Kevin, I guess this is a question for you to look into, you know, with this being the wettest summer in the history of the United States. Uh, you know, did you dial, did you like dial it back or anything?
Oh, big time, yeah. Yeah, we, we hardly had to do anything this year anywhere up here.
I think, I don't think anybody.
The numbers are gonna be further, you know, lower than expected. If we don't have this kind of rain going forward.
Yeah, the numbers I took were from uh, the year from uh, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one.
Right.
It was last year, last year's uh, flows.
Tom? Wolf here, um, when you look at those a hundred and forty-five gallons per day, unit average, does that take into account, or are you even getting information how much irrigation, how much area, right, how much lawn area or planners and so on? Um, a, an applicant is, is planning to, to irrigate? Are you getting that information at all when you make that assessment?
Well, we've we only take it so far as to, is to use the same design flows as we did in phase one. And, and we note that so far, their, their demands have stayed within their uh, current allocation. So, so they, they're conservative and um, I mean, what we're, we're assuming that there's no huge, there's no huge like irrigation, like doing a golf course or something beyond, beyond this whole thing here. And and certainly, any, any irrigation plans should, for future development here should be submitted for. For approval. We also take the uh, we also in the in the. Draft letter here, we, you know, we take the uh, design average demands and and use the peaking factor to. Generate the maximum day demand. So we're taking those max data mans and adding them to the rest of yours.
And Tom, is that what is that factor? That was one and a half?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, so I guess that, you know, I have a, I'm having trouble with that too because our our winter demand is like. Two gallons, two million gallons a day or less. And we have peaks in the summer. It it says in a report that we've never exceeded five million gallons per day since two thousand and ten. But actually, you guys did an analysis last summer when you include the storage tanks dropping in that volume. Plus what our wells are putting out, we exceeded five million gallons. So five million gallons divided by two is a peaking factor of two and a half. So using one and a half, I don't think is realistic.
Well, the.
This is why this is why we're getting in trouble with not being able to deliver the water in the summer. In a normal summer, which is not a a deluge of rain like we had this year.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the the averages. Um, the. The average is assumed is an annual average, so it's it's definitely, it's gonna be lower than average in the winter. And and higher in the in the summer, so.
But that's a problem because we need to look at it in the peak. Honestly, the average doesn't matter at all. The peak value is the anything that matters at all.
I mean, we've got fifteen million dollars of infrastructure just to provide summer water.
Right.
Probably twenty, probably twenty five million. So that's all based on a system development charge. So to not. It's almost like peak demand is the only thing that matters. An average doesn't mean a damn thing. Only in in applying that peak, but we gotta apply the correct peak though. And and I don't think we've been looking at this all along and, you know, as projects have proceeded over the years. Everybody's coming in with just their average demand, domestic use, no one's even looking at irrigation. And we're 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 delivering water at two and a half times what we were reported to need to deliver. And and that's that's the challenge that we're running into and that's. So I don't see that, you know, I I see it stated in here that irrigation demands are not included in here, so. You know, I I think we need to include those in here and I I think that's what we need to to rely on and assess the um. The system development charge on here because. That's the infrastructure that we've built that we need to maintain to deliver the peak flow, not to deliver. The annual average, that that's a different animal, that that's our our infrastructure is not geared to deliver. The annual average, it's geared up to deliver the peak flow, and I think that's what we gotta look at when we're assessing. System development charge on here, so. I I think I'd like to see um, i- in irrigation amount. And I don't know, I don't know if if flatly can do a calculation and say, you know, we've got this much lawn area and I know typically. At least an inch a week is what's looked at for irrigation, um, and maybe even in some cases, two inches a week, but. To to try up with a number that over that area, two inches a week, you can back that into a a a daily demand in irrigation.
I can definitely get that for you.
All right, that would be that would be helpful. You know, it it is the um, is the rest of the commercial development in the high bay areas and the um. Um, is that all gonna be irrigated too? Probably, I would imagine it probably would.
I don't think so. I mean, that's mostly, it's mostly pavement, you know, it's pavement and especially with the uh. The flex buildings out in front of St. Cobain, we're gonna have, it's gonna be existing wood line there. There's there's not gonna be a whole lot in the way of uh, of lawn out there.
Yeah, okay.
Either one of them, either either one of them. Um, I know for the high bay building, there's a big grass area, but that's actually a detention basin area, so that's not gonna be irrigated, that's a drainage area. Um, and the same holds true for for some of the larger areas with the uh. With the flex buildings, they're gonna be detention basin areas, there's not a whole lot of. Not a ton of green out there, which is probably makes. Uh, DES pretty happy if they wanted us to get as much pavement as we could out here, so trying to help them out.
Yeah.
Um, I I mean, Kevin, stick your fingers in here for a sec. This is gonna be an internal discussion, but I mean, this this is the first time I personally am really fully aware that I'm seeing. How we go through that process of these permits. And I I believe we need to have a review of that because. Like we're establishing here, right, we're looking at the wrong things, right, we're not.
So my intent was, knowing that we we didn't get irrigation information, I was actually, when we write up the ident, the amendment to the. The initial agreement. I was gonna, you know, at this point where we did not receive any um, irrigation demands. I was gonna put that restriction in that agreement to know irrigation would be provided. So that's that was where I was gonna go with this, as far as. That goes.
Yeah, and and I mean, obviously, we can hold. Flatly accountable for maybe a gap in our pool process, right? So this may or may not be having effect now, like we have to be careful with that too, right? But I think in future projects, we need to start, we need we need to go through that process and really understand what what does it mean? And what are we signing off on, right? We've been having this discussion for some time and and. And I I think there's there's some room for improvement collectively. I mean.
Typically, what what we'd like to do when when it's possible is to sink a well and use that for the irrigation, so it doesn't impact the water system. Unfortunately, as you know, the situation out there, we're not allowed to sink a well and do anything out here. So we're kind of stuck. That that's the uh. And that really has nothing to do with with us, it's just happens to be the situation that we're stuck to be in because of the situation out there.
You'd probably be required to to filter it, just like, you know, we're doing with our drinking water, right?
Pretty much, yeah, yeah, I mean, they wouldn't for the for the apartments, they wouldn't, uh, DES wouldn't even allow us to put in a uh, we usually have a community garden and everything. They said, no, we want nothing, nothing touching anything with.
Wow.
Vegetable gardens or flower gardens or any sort of gardens of any kind, so that's.
Yeah.
We have that on, uh, we've got a nice big garden in our at our Nashua site, uh, we've got one that we're putting in in a Summersworth side. We would have loved to have done one out here and uh. Just like the big third red X from Family Feud on that one from DES.
Yeah.
Wasn't happening, so. Um, and again, that goes back to, you know, you know, we like to keep our properties looking good. And and we do, you know, we do irrigation primarily on the uh, you know, the residential properties. Um, you know, if retail goes in, there's probably gonna be something there. I mean, we we'd like to leave. You know, the ability to do some irrigation out there, so if we need to. You know, would not we need to, I'm gonna, I'll provide you those numbers that we use for irrigation for the residential, which will be far more than anything for the rest of the site. Just to give you an idea, I can tell you, it's it's in the whole scheme of things, it's not, it's not a whole lot, but I know every every bit, you know, counts to, you know, to your water supply, so. Make sure I get that to you, so.
Yeah, I think we definitely want to know, and and we don't want to, we don't want to, we'd love for you to put irrigation in and we'd love to supply you the water. When we have it. It's only when, it's only when, you know, we're in drought situations when we don't have water, that's that's where it becomes a problem and everything, so um. You know, on on the flip side, if if you are putting irrigation in, we want to, we want to just make sure that we're allocating it to you as well. Um, and so that way we don't get caught short, like, you know, we have been in years past where. Like I've explained is, you know, if we don't account for the irrigation. It certainly happens in the middle of the summer and the numbers don't lie, you know, when you're looking at something pushing five million gallons and it might only be for a few days.
Right, right.
For those few days, our system is challenged to supply it, so. We need to put that infrastructure in place. We have, we've got an emergency connection with Penechuk in Nashua. And we can open that up to supplement our needs, but when we open that up, we're losing money every day because we're paying more for the. For that amount of water than we're billing for it, so. That doesn't put MVD in a good position to lose water to supply everybody for irrigation.
Right, right, right. I get that.
Yeah. All right, so I mean, I I don't, I, we don't have a quorum here to approve anything and not that we necessarily need to, Ron's got the authority to to approve these and um. I think we're just giving feedback in discussion with Ron on on what what he should be looking for in order to assess this and I. Think we'd like to know those irrigation numbers and all of this.
Yeah, I'll make sure Ron Ron gets a copy, I'll make sure the board gets a copy, Tom, I'll make sure you get a copy and uh. And we'll just move forward from there.
So I know the planning board at this point is looking for a. Able to serve letter, I guess, for for you.
Yeah, yes, they are.
At this point, I'm not a hundred percent comfortable giving that letter until I do get uh, irrigation numbers and.
Okay.
Tom can run that.
Okay. But um, just a couple of things I want to clarify on the um. On the on the system development charge, that's always been based on um. Uh, the average uh, average day demands, um, you know, for everyone across the system. This that's 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 it's done on the on the ability to serve and the and buy into the infrastructure. Uh, but we do look at, and in the report, we do look at maximum demands as as um. As the primary thing that the on the impact of the system. And and you'll see in the in the report, there is a table too where we're, we've been tracking all these different developments that have been proposed over the years to see how they're adding up. And um, so that we're planning, um, and that and that's why you're you're looking at additional supplies is to be able to. You know, serve these now in the future. Um, but the. But the the idea is to be be managing this, you know, in a in a smart way and making sure that you've got the. Supplies before you, before these get added on, but all these other potential connections are. Um, it it adds up to point two average or a point three MGD maximum. Um, it's it should be pretty conservative because some of these have been recently connected, others are probably years out or may never connect. Um, and most of them never really reach their design flows as as, you know, Kevin noted in his case for. For the first phase, so.
So in this table too, though, the the max day flow, that's where the footnote one says it's based on a peaking factor of one point five, right?
Yeah.
There's really no way for us to, you'd have to almost measure on a daily or weekly basis. What the actual max daily flow is on these developments. And we're actually averaging that out over the three month billing cycle, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's really what you've got is a three month billing cycle, uh, but we can take, um, I mean, we can take a a closer look at that based on. Um, on, I, you know, I would say your summer average. Design flow for your system as a whole versus your max day and and take a look at that ratio again. But but most systems are around that, that kind of ballpark typically. Um, so. It's, you know, it's 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 a planning number, but um.
Yeah, cuz you got.
I mean, you're right, for an individual assista, each individual connection is gonna vary a little bit. Um.
Yeah, on table three, you've got a summer average demand footnote number two, three point five million gallons.
Yeah.
Um, and then the footnote one is the one that says it's not exceeded five million gallons since two thousand and ten. I know we we did, like I said, when you factor in the drawdown in the storage tanks. And um, it it was actually a report by Underwood. Um, that Keith had presented to us and we we did, when you include the drawdown in the tanks plus the yield of the well, the wells. It it did get greater than five million gallons. And the only and the only reason that it it stopped was because we had to put irrigation restriction on. So.
Well, that's, uh, I mean, I think that's, you know, maybe I can make that more clear in the report, you haven't exceeded. By when. When there's been, you know, the conservation measures in place, and I think that's why you had it. Greater than that, if, you know, a number of years ago is when there was less measures, that's my understanding, so. Um, so all this, you know, all this ability to serve really is is assumes that you have some. Conservation measures in place or you're willing to exercise those. Or or bring on Penechuk for those extreme days when you when you have it, so, cuz um. Without those, there, you know, there isn't the ability to serve all these. Um, new developments, as you know.
I mean, ideally, we'd like to be able to supply those irrigation demands, um, and that requires us to have more infrastructure in place to do that. And that's why, that's my point about tying that in to the to the number we should be using in the system, system development charge. What what is um, where does it say? Does it say anywhere in our bylaws or anything? I I'm not familiar with that specific section, but. Does it say in there what the system development charge is specifically based on? Is it? Does it say that it's average an annual average or or do we have sort of the leeway to determine that?
Yeah. I I, you know, I know from helping to develop that a number of years ago, um, it it, you know, it's based on your total system value. And your and your and your and your annual average flow rate, so. Um, so for a single family home, it it was seventy five gallons per day, you know, it. It and it works out to four fifty five per gallon per day.
So the so any irrigation demand is sort of diluted out, it's sort of averaged out over the entire year that way, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So maybe that's, maybe that's an MBD policy that we gotta look at a little bit closer and. I I I, again, I I would think if our infrastructure is there to supply. You know, the peak flows and with the irrigation in the summer, the the number that's approaching the five million gallons a day. Then I I think we should be using the peak flow numbers in the system development charge. Maybe that's something we need to look at as. As a village district to implement it that way, so. And that goes beyond this project, but you know, just something in general that, and and I think this is why we put that item, action item to look into doing that, cuz. You know, this is the, the the thing that always happens is when you look at the summer peaks, we're always, you know, factors of two plus over. The annual average or the the winter average anyways, you know?
Oh, it's really the spring, you know, the the pool, pool filling time, right, it's it's it's. It's really Memorial Day, right?
The last couple. Years, we've had other limitations, we did on top, so we we, you know, we've lost a well, we had four or five down for a while. So those are all contributing factors as well.
Right.
But typically, we have the issue during. Droughts. You know, when we hit, when we're actually in a drought and and as that temperature kicks kicks out. You start seeing more people, you know. Do the irrigation and and a lot of it, a lot of it was people that don't normally water, you know, throw the, you know, run the hose and and. With the sprinkler out, so.
Right.
Maybe it's. More so, we maybe we need to manage droughts a little different as well in the future, you know, uh. Strict stricter restrictions, I I don't know, to to allow the watering, but.
Yeah.
As well, but that's obviously a topic for another.
So I guess uh, the layout of the water system and everything that seems to be reasonable, everybody seems to be um, in agreement with that. I I did notice in one of the figures. There is there like a dead end that's gonna run to that last new building on Gilbert Crossing? Um, and is that that green line that shows up on the utility map or something in the report? Um, if if that's acceptable to everybody the way that is or um.
Yeah, I think that's.
It's on site, I'm sorry, Tom, I didn't mean to walk on it.
Yeah, I think that's your uh, you're referring to the the one that feeds the existing apartment building set that currently is a dead end.
Okay. And the rest of the loops proposed with the red lines and the blue lines here, whi- which is going to be the ultimate um, configuration. You know, as lo- as long as MVD and Underwood is okay with that, I I think, you know, we're okay, it looks like you are making an effort to. To put loops in there. Um.
So one of the things that I I've talked to Kevin about, um. I would have liked, I want to see the whole thing. Completed, obviously, and for reasons Kevin's saying that, you know, they don't know what they're gonna be building in that, the commercial site area. But I would like to some some sort of a surey that. But I would like to some some sort of a surey that. A bond or something that.
Gonna say the same thing.
That if something, you know, happens and and uh. This never gets finished, at least we can, we can complete that loop, cuz that's one thing that we've been asking for from the, from the very beginning. And Kevin's fine, we're doing something.
Yeah, we we're we're, we can do, I think we did something similar, do a letter of credit for that section of it. But, you know, if we're gonna put up a letter of credit for that section of it, we would also like an amount of water for that section also.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? And and again, I don't know right now, uh, you know, it it shows, uh. I think we're showing retail there, it may be more re- it may be more retail, the use may change based on. Uh, how, you know, how how business runs and whatever direction it may be. Uh, right now, we don't plan on building a whole lot of retail. We've all seen how retail is in the last uh. Three, four years, there's not a whole lot of, I mean, if something pops up, we'll build it, uh, but if not. It's either gonna stay as is for now. Um, or there may be a change of use of some someplace down the road, but we'll have, we'd have to deal with the planning board first on that. Um, to get any change of uh, change of use in there, if if that's what's done, it it may just stay as is. Um, but we have no problem putting up a letter of credit, we would just like an amount reserved for us if we're gonna put up a letter of credit.
So so in addition to the to the water mains we're seeing on this, um, I guess I'm looking at the um. The water utility plan.
Yeah.
And I see the the red and the green and the blue. We've also got a water main that's running. At least one, right? That's running in D W Highway as well.
Yes, so there's a twelve inch that's actually on that side of the road. Um, east side of the road that runs up. Uh, we were, so if if we back up to the initial approval for Gilbert Crossing. We originally asked, so we actually have two, there's a sixteen that runs up uh, the west side to Priscilla. Then it changed to six, and then we have the twelve on, it actually crosses over uh, on the east side. We actually wanted them to extend the sixteen from Priscilla. And then start the entrance, take their service Gilbert Crossing off of that that main. The the state would not allow it, we just, we could not. Get him to do anything, uh, it allows to put anything up that side of the road. So we actually did a crossing at Priscilla and tied the two mains together. But the whole, right from the beginning, the the uh, the initial plan was to get a loop. Through the through that project. Uh, just to 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 get some additional.
Yeah.
Off of a different line, so if something was, uh, there's a break or a shutdown or something, it would minimize um. Time off.
Yeah. All right, so so this isn't gonna hinder anything further down the line to the north down D W Highway, this is just gonna. Provide redundant piping.
Exactly.
Which is an improvement, so that's good.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true, the uh, because that's really, as you know, that's the only water main serving. Serving that area and we did take a look at what the impact would be to first people down at the end of the line and there's really minimal impact to them. As as a result of this, but it is a, it is a reliability thing to, um, so that's why the looping is important.
All right, so I guess based on that, have you gotten everything that you were looking for here tonight? I I don't think we're making any firm decisions at this evening, so. I don't, you have enough direction, Kevin, to proceed with some.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I I think we're in pretty good shape. I'll I'll get those numbers, like I said, to the board, to Ron, to Tom. For the irrigation and uh. Roll from there, I think we're in pretty good shape.
And Kevin, you be developing final design drawings for the, you know, the the water main work and.
Yeah, I'm gonna have all the all the plans that are conditionally approved, revised. Uh, to show what we've discussed uh, in the past and and today.
Okay. I had just one other question. I know, um, we've talked about this before. I just wondered if you heard any update from, um. Is it Gold or Associates through St. Obane about their, um, any proposed groundwater remediation plan?
I know that, I I know they've submitted something to D E S. Um, I know D E S is going through it, uh, that's my understanding. Uh, I know Gold is getting ready to go out and take some more samples of some more wells out there in their future. What else out there? And that that's pretty much it as far as the water goes, I I.
Yeah.
What I know from Gold, or I know we're working with them on, you know, D S is on them to uh. Do something with a sewer line that's in rough shape, we're working with them on that, cuz we gotta, we, you know, we're gonna redo some easement so they can work around.
Right.
What we're gonna propose behind St. Obane. But everything's moving forward, have the D S, unfortunately, you know, that they're. They've lost a few people, same with same with D O T, they've lost a few people. And uh, you know, not that it's anybody's fault that's there now, cuz they're working their tails off to get stuff done, but. Uh, the process is excruciatingly slow.
Yeah, and and I know it's got nothing to do with Flatley, cuz I I know all of that onus is on on St. Obane and their consultant, but I know it encompasses. Or it encompasses Flatley's part of Flatley's land, so.
Oh, yeah.
Why I was just pointing that out and and hopefully, when they come up with a um, a groundwater remediation plan. It it's not gonna conflict by having Flatley site already developed. And and limit the remediation capability, you know, that that's that's the concern we had all along and. We've written a letter to that effect, but.
Yeah, I think I I think they've got it under under pretty good control, honestly. Um, I haven't seen any plans or anything.
Right.
They're they're aware of what our plans are out there and, um, you know, they know what what areas they have to work in and.
Yeah.
If we're able to help out by, you know, let them use a chunk of land for something, then then we'll do it. Uh, but they've been, they've been doing pretty good, uh, with their, uh, you know, their. Their uh, their new uh. Tower there in the air or whatever.
Yeah.
Um, that just, I think they just finished up with that, or they're really close to finishing up with that. And uh, they're ready to start moving on to the next uh, the next fix, so.
All right, any other um, comments or questions? Oh. All right. That's great.
Right.
I guess, uh, that's good enough for us, so um. We'll take this up maybe at the next meeting or a future meeting and uh.
Sounds good. All right, I appreciate it.
Great, thanks.
Thank you all, bye.
Thank you.
Did you uh? Get your question answered for the action items for Tom or?
Uh, yeah, let me see what those were again here. Yeah. Yeah, um, let's see, well, first of all, Tom, is that everything you had on the Flatley project? There was nothing else that you needed?
Yeah, I mean, that's it for now. Obviously, this, uh, you know, based on experiences, we'll wanna keep watching them real closely and this, uh. You know, it's very thorough in the number of recommendations and action items for them to follow through on. Um, there may be additional escrow needed for us to review final plans and be involved with a. Review of the development agreement, if you amendment, like us on that, um. And and, you know, make it, make sure they they go and build what they actually say they're gonna build and. Um. That's all, but uh, you know, but I feel we've looked at it, you know, pretty conservatively enough and and then you can think about what do you. Uh, if they're building a loop, how does that figure into the S D C charges and stuff? So so this is, it's a little bit of more of a unique development than some of these are that are that are a little simpler.
Right. So I guess maybe we might wanna just consider, do we look at? Peak flow with irrigation as far as assessing that value onto the S D C charge or or not? Um, I mean, I know they're building their own infrastructure within their own property, but um. Who who's gonna own that? Are we gonna own that? They're gonna own all that? Okay. Well, that's good.
But technically, that they will be a benefit to the district too, if it's a loop, it's it's gonna, you know, sort of people to the north.
Right. So the, I I wasn't aware that they're asking for a reduction in the fees. Are they at this point, the S D C charge?
Well, I think I, that's the only time I really heard that from Kevin verbally. He, they haven't really put in any forth, anything forth in writing, but that. I'm sure that's that's something to be negotiated down the road here, um.
Right.
He he kinda mentioned it to me the other day and I kinda went with, well, we're. That's the numbers we go by, that it's gotta be the same, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is what it is, it's.
I mean, so I so I would just, you know, the S D C charge you put in there is whoever charging everyone else, and I I mean, actually, it's a good deal. Cuz you're basing it on apartment usage, not to- single family home usage and. And um, but it's, but there is room for negotiation based on them providing the water main or. Uh, loop and and, you know, maybe some other improvements, so you can you can look at it that way.
Well, I I think we need to have more, you know, I'm not sure how much of that should be discussed in a meeting.
Yeah, that's not on the table right now anyway, so.
Right.
Okay.
It's really for staff to to review that and propose something to the board.
Yep.
So.
So, yeah, the only other things I had was, um, on the action items list was, um. Um, the review of the water allocation process, which, um. We could, we could probably take that up with with Keith at some point. I'm not sure if you were, you know, have any comments on that at all, but. We we kinda got into that a little bit tonight. Um, and um, what else do I have here? Oh, yeah, the uh, decision to move forward on the um, water source alternatives, I think we have a. We're gonna schedule a meeting to to talk about that further, I think. Can we talk about that?
Once we get the uh, across the service.
Right.
Um, numbers from Penn Check Water.
Okay.
We'll have a meeting and we can go from there.
And then maybe the corrosion control report, which I know you were very heavily involved with, Tom, if I'm not mistaken. So at some point, you know, when we can fit it into the schedule, um. We might wanna have you back to just kinda go over that with with the commissioners. I don't think we actually discussed that at a meeting yet, right? If I'm not mistaken, right? I think we got a copy of the report, I made some comments, we had a Zoom meeting and.
Yeah, yeah, we issued the report final, but ha- happy to come back and talk about it, certainly.
Okay, all right. Uh, so I don't know, do you have anything to add on the cost of service study or Ron, is that something you can report on? Um, on your own or um?
Yeah, I I've been. I really didn't have a whole lot to report, other than, you know, we we received it, uh, uh. You know, a formal proposal. Proposal, and I just gotta uh, send a formal letter accepting the proposal, forty-five, it was cast one through four. Um, five, we're holding off on, again, uh, if. Decide to go with them, then that has to be the five and I've topped my head, I believe that would be, um. What cast five is now top my head, to look at, but.
All right. All right, so I think, I guess that's it for Tom, we don't have anything else that we need him to hang on for?
Okay, I'll sign off. Thanks a lot, folks, okay?
Thanks for coming, take care. All right. So I think. Now we're at, um. Yeah, I just. So let's see, now we're at, uh. Yeah, so now we're going to review a request from Richard Bowles, who is here with us now, uh, for a waiver of connection fees. Um, do we, you wanna summarize the situation on this, since you've been involved, or how do we wanna?
Well, I know that Mr. Bowles has been back and forth between M V D and the town. Um, obviously, we just don't waive fees, it's gotta go in front of the board, um, the town. Um, we were aware that on the agenda for the town, there was just going to be discussion about the American infrastructure, water. Uh, funds coming in and what they're gonna be used for, and Nancy Murphy, I believe, is the one that added to the agenda, uh, that it. She was proposing that it be, um, used to help out private well owners, so we'd have a discussion about that. Um, and then we've gone over his, um, results, so the results of. Mr. Bowles' private well water, um, there's no P F A S of the four that are regulated, there's three other ones, P F B A. Which is not a shock. But, um.
Yeah, it was kinda hard to see the uh, copy in the um, the the lab reports, just.
So the P F B A was five point six four, P F P. EA was three point seven six and P F H X A was three point zero nine. None of those are regulated compounds right now, um. And the non-detects were all for the fourth that he did have. I wanted to point out, you have given us this one, it was all highlighted. This is actually percent recovery, it's a quality control thing. Yeah, and these are real, aren't our results numbers, so I just wanted to make sure you knew.
All I know is the state came into my house, twenty sixteen, it wasn't there, then I get, they came in, I did all this work, whole entire thing. And they came in two weeks after I finished it and then gave me this report. I called up Mr. Larson, I guess, who was in charge of the state for the water thing. He had this lady, Dr. Karen Small contacted me, she's a toxicologist that represents the state of New Hampshire. Bottom line is, this is her interpretation. Uh, the four that were condemned, state, cuz the research has been done, the other eighty thousand P F O A's, or we wanna live. They're in her viewpoint, they're just as bad, research hasn't been done, it's just the reality of it, okay? It's politics and money and blah, blah, blah. Followed, she says, even though of those numbers you just read right now, okay? They are below your own standards, a lot lower than what the town's putting out for water, but like she says. You don't know, Paulson, you're gonna get a surge, next thing, right now, you go testing, you get the two hundred part. But you just don't know that, you're right by the dump, and the odds are reasonably high that you're gonna get that surge, just a matter of time. So, I went through like three years or four years, I think, my well upper died, I already ran the line. All the way into the house, all I want is the meter, turn it off, okay? So, what gets me is like, maybe I'm completely off base on here, but it's like, I've jumped through all the hoops. And it's like, the town in Merrimack allowed Cobain to dump all their sludge into the dump. It took the money from Cobain. And now it's just filtering out, now it's just filtering down, well. You know, I was getting seventeen gallons a minute, I had the report twenty sixteen, I spent three hundred dollars for the outside light, test this water, every which way. It was beautiful. And also like four months ago, my wife started commenting something strange, and this is what opened up this whole Pandora's box.
Did you, so you went before the town?
Now, I went to the town first, I had no idea, I went to the town manager, and he told me, you must put your request in. You guys here, the Mayor of that Village District, based on the outcome of this presentation. Come and see me, that's what I needed, right? So what it is, is now you're going back to that American studies, none of that money, there's only. If you have those chemicals, four that have already been labeled, right, okay? Only that money can be used for filter, I don't have those, I got the other eighty thousand, whatever you call it, filtering through. And they're sort of surprised that I haven't gotten that yet, personally.
And I, and I believe the town also, my second, I did meet with with, um. Tom Andrew McCallie on this, and he he did say that it's. It's not a proper use for home, for the wells, uh, uh, residential wells, so.
Well, that's what they're trying to argue, providing one of those four compounds. But that's it, it's, the only reason I go back to this toxicologist, like you said. They're just as bad, her own personal viewpoint, she represents the state, there, in her viewpoint, they're just as bad as the for the research. The only reason they haven't been labeled, it's politics, it's money, that you condemn all wells. They're gonna affect so many businesses down the road that use the, use these products, and it just opens up Pandora's box. Basically, they're never gonna really research that. So it's put on the homeowner, and once I've been here for thirty-five years, I sit in, I have what I pay in property tax times thirty-five years. And I'm like, so I hooked the line in, filtering, so do everything else, and I only, and I even went to comment, I don't have a problem paying for the heater. I don't have a problem paying for the guy's labor to come out and do it. But this, you know, the slot, we go back to twenty six hundred dollars for something that I didn't do. I just find that's an insult. That's where I'm coming from. And I know personally, it's got nothing to do with you guys. It goes back to the town, right? But I'm caught in the middle.
No, and and I fully understand, because that's the twenty six hundred dollars. While the entrance fee covers the equipment in the ground.
Right.
That we've that we've already installed. And then obviously, the SDC charge is an equity buy into the system, but. We typically, I mean, in my opinion, but by, we typically do not. Waive the fees. So. Again, by my recommendation to the board would be that. If it's if it's a town. If it if it's coming from the landfill. Then it probably should be what those fees would be. You'd you'd want to go look to the town.
Well, that's how I would get caught into the politics.
And I know.
Okay, and then it's all. I'm just caught in the middle. That's all I can, all I can say. It's not like I'm financially going to hurt you by doing this. It's not a financial, I'll pay for the meter, I'll pay for the labor to put it in. It's not a financial impact. For someone who's been here for thirty years and paid into the town, and it's all part of the whole entire loop.
It is. We're separate, we're separate budgets. It was.
Yeah.
But your taxes.
You're here, it's a town.
We're the, we are the water department for the town of Merrimack, but your tax dollars, we do not see any of that for for revenues. So. It's it's it's. We represent the same people, we're two different.
I pay like a still every month, nineteen dollars every quarter for the fire hydrant.
Yep.
You know, and it's like. It's it's just to play, it's just, you put all the time, if you came over my house and somebody did the filtering system, waters. I updated the whole thing. I ran your line in the house in case of a disaster, blah, blah, blah. And then it's like. Now the toxicologist, like you said, when they get this filter online, you need to hook up to the town. Because right now you're, right now you're basing everything on those numbers. You're going to have a surge, the next day it's come flying down and you have no idea. You can't afford to test your water.
Right.
So this is where I'm stuck at.
It is the town or the state ever planning to continue to test your well if you kept using your well?
Yeah, they they approached me like, first thing they did, three years later, it was the four years later, they they called me out of the clear blue.
Yeah.
We want to test your well. And according to the lady that came over, I understood correctly. They are, I guess, there's like a bunch of wells on the outskirts of the dump. And every ninety days, they test. That water to see what's coming out. I know that stream behind because the gentleman who was down the corner, I guess he had tested. And it's loaded PFAS, everything else coming down that river. Right behind me. It falls behind. Was it Bean Road? And you take a right on the bed for that, where that stream is right there?
Yeah, what is it? It's not, it's not Babusikport.
I think it is.
Is it?
And the guy that lives in that brown house on the cars, he said, I had the water tested because he was using it and water. He can't use that water no more. So I mean, it's.
So the one thing I wanted to, maybe some whoever at the DES told you that you should connect to the to the town water as soon as you can.
Well, she said after you have, she says, here's the gamble you're taking. Right now, technically, your water is healthier than the town water.
That's what I was going to say.
But the problem is, she says, once they get their filter, I guess she spoke to somebody, she contacted somebody directly, she was like. Got all kinds of information, the timetable, when you're going to do the filters off, blah, blah, blah. You need to transition. In the meantime. Your gambling, you don't get this surge coming down from the dump.
Yeah.
That's the gamble you're taking right now. Because they have a strong suspicion. Besides all these PFAS, PFOAs, or whatever you call them, all that, they want, they're looking for vaults, stuff like, you know, contain gasoline, oil.
Yeah, yeah.
Thing, they took, we want to test it for everything.
And that was all non-detect from what I thought I saw, right?
Yeah, knock on wood, but like she said, it's pretty good results.
Yeah.
But she says, you're basically, you don't know what's going to happen the next thing.
So one of the things that we're sort of. I guess the word struggling is not the right word, but we're trying to consider is that. When do, once, one, in two thousand and, well, next year, by supposedly, we heard it tonight, by June twenty twenty two, we should have all our treatment plants online. The thing we're trying to figure out is. And economically, we're we're trying to measure this now, where we're in the middle of one of our treatment plants. How long is the filter media going to last? Are we looking to get? Non-detectable for all of the nine thousand PFAS compounds in the drinking water system? When regulatorily, we only need to have compliance with the four that are regulated. Obviously. If we're trying to change out the media. So that we have non-detect of all the PFAS compounds. We're going to be going through media three times faster than we otherwise would. So I don't think we've come as a as a district to a full conclusion of what we're going to do with that. So. I guess my point being is that. And if this this may go to a vote potentially. As a as a warrant article, how the town, how our customers want us to treat this. It could turn out that. They there, maybe they would say, you know what, we just want you to regulate the four compounds. And the rest of the stuff. We don't care. You could be in a situation where you connect to us, to the MBD. And you may have the same of the rest of the PFAS chemicals that you have now, maybe more, maybe less.
But you guys don't know what the.
That's the, that's the thing we're going to know, because we're spending the money to test. We have to test for those compounds. So you'll have a better level of comfort knowing. Whereas if the onus is on you, you have to spend the three hundred dollars. However, often you want for the lab test. So. So I I see from your perspective that it's more of a an assurance on your part.
It's an assurance and it's like her whole thing, she stressed to me, it's toxic cause. Is that you don't know when you're, that surge is going to come. It's just a matter of time. Next week, two years, five years, you're going to, you're right behind the dump. It's in that river behind you and it's loaded. The only thing that's different, like the guy that lives beside me, his well is down six hundred feet, goes dry and odd, so he, mine's forty five feet. I get seventeen gallons, seventeen gallons. It was the one that was great.
So it sounds like.
Other stuff, if it separates itself. You know, the bad compounds sit in the water, because maybe the crap, you know, the specific weight of it sits there. What I got is sort of like bubbly and just, I have no idea.
Your well is only forty five feet deep.
Yeah, I am.
You probably. That's probably not a bedrock well then. That's that's probably a sand and gravel.
All I know is when I bought that house. I had to put the aerator in it because I was getting that magnesium and it's sulfur on the water.
Oh, yeah.
And I had to put a water softener also to get the. All the rest of the iron up.
Yeah, yeah.
Iron content, it's five times higher than the federal standard and the magnesium through the roof.
And you're still dealing with that now, right? Maintaining all that equipment?
It's when I ran that line through the street, the only thing I appreciate what you guys allowed me to do. I humped up to the street. I was amazed by that. I rented it back home. I trenched it from the street all the way into my house. I said, you guys want to inspect it? No, just make sure you walk four feet to the line of the bricks. But that's all the way connected into the street. I filled it all in. And you can see the veins of iron. It's all sand.
Yeah.
I mean, I started off the trench. That was foot and a half wide. By the time I got down six feet, I was up fifteen feet wide, it's just sand.
So there's a value even beyond the PFAS issue of connecting to us because. Then you would have all this treatment equipment that you have that you can basically get rid of it.
I would get rid of the aerator, slang. The aerator, I guess, pulls out the iron and the. Magnesium, I would keep that for my sprinklers.
Sprinklers, okay.
The water softener, I got hooked up to your your water, I spoke to Julie six months ago. It's all set up. She said the hardness is still there. My wife and I, yeah, I got to hook up that water softener.
Yeah.
For your incoming water. So I'm not going to lose use of that equipment. I just don't really, I'm a little.
Yeah.
And then it's like, I didn't know. It's like, I went through all this and I got pictures of, I had two superstore hot water tanks.
Yeah.
I tore them right up, get rid of them. But I put a brand new eighty gallon hot water.
Yeah.
Steel hot water tank, because I didn't know if it was just residue sitting in there. I flushed it and I.
Yeah. So I I think part of the concern is if we give you this waiver. You know, then it it. Kind of sets a precedent if anybody else comes in with the same situation as you have.
According to the town manager. There's only one other person's got the exact same similar situation that I have. So he said, you have to approach Merrimack Village District, make your request with them, over the honor, if not, come back and see me. But the problem is, I know his hands are tied because then he was betting on just the funds from that American.
Recovery plan.
And I'll have one of those four. I got all the other ones. I have one of those four, so I see that.
You know. This is actually very aggravating to watch because you're one of. You're not just one of two, really. Pretty much every well owner, private well owner in the area has the same problem. And they goes out, goes out to P's, goes, goes everybody. I mean. You you have, you have taxpayers, right, and 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 residents of towns that are contaminated. And and the law and the regulations are just not there right now to solve that problem, right? I mean. Basically, by asking MBD to not charge you that fee, MBD now is basically paying the damage to polluters, whoever they might be, right?
My clients.
No, hang on, please let me finish. Basically, you're asking MBD to to pay the damage that has been done by others, not by MBD, right? And 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 that is something that is very difficult for us to 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 agree to because. It 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 does open up that kind of wormhole, all those other people that are private well owners whose wells have been contaminated by other parties, not by MBD, right? And that's the problem. And 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 this is really sounding terrible is because I hate ourselves for having to say that because we don't want to be in that situation either. And. There have been bills brought forth in the past, and there are new bills that are being brought forth right now in 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 the state of New Hampshire to address that. But it really is, you know, MBD has has no, no, no reach for private well owners. We just don't. We have no reach at all. And we have no leverage in front of the ES. We have no leverage in front of the state. We learned that the hard way with the settlement agreements and everything, right? I mean, we have no leverage at all in front of the state as far as private well owners goes. And and private private well owners are really on their own right now. It's very disheartening.
But here's, here's a viewpoint. It's just, it's all. If I was. If I didn't have that whole PFAS problem, like my well's going dry, you know, heading for the guy next door. Okay, you're going to pay the twenty six hundred dollars. It is what it is. But. I'm getting, I don't have that problem. I got basically contaminated by basically the town of Merrimack allowing Colby. They took the money from Colby because they dumped their sludge in and it all tricked down, down. Granted, two separate entities, but you both have to work hand in hand. Whether it comes out of your funds, it's not really coming out of these funds. You're not making a profit off. So when it comes down, I'll pay you for the meter. I'll pay for the labor for the guy to turn it out, I. It doesn't seem the same. So I'm asking you, okay, this is what costs us already bucks for the meter and an hour's like, I'll pay it for it. You got to make a profit off it after thirty years of property taxes. I didn't even, you know, it's.
I know.
You know where I'm coming from? It's just like a kicking ass.
Yeah, but again, MBD is now part of that.
Yeah, well, someone's got a, the town should, whether you guys get involved in it, because you're the water, the whole thing. It's like, hey, these people have got contaminated wells. If they want to hook up to the town water and it's there, we can offer a discount rate of this. You know, we're not making a profit. We're covering our expenses. People are happy. They don't feel like they're getting. That's just a view, something to consider. But all I'm asking you out of this whole thing, you guys could chit chat about it. I got to get up quick early tomorrow morning, but. I just, I worked second shift my whole life. I decided retired, forced retirement, and we're just near traffic control. It's like. And I was working second shift, now it's like, do the part time private school buses, it's killing me. You know, it's just that early in the morning. Anyways. You can, whatever conclusion you come to, you can send me a letter saying, yes, no, this is where we're at, we can reduce it, you know, I appreciate it. I just, I'm just trying to stay out of politics. It's like, yeah, you know. That's what I'm just trying to.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's. I know you got to cover your expenses, but, you know, it's something where, look at the homeowners that have been here for ages and say. You know, a little compromise goes a long way. You know, it sets a nice. And that's what it's all about, the homeowners. It's not about the companies and, you know, it's all, it's about the homeowners that live in town. That's your first priority. These other companies come in and build all this, you're using them to generate funds to cover your your internal expenses. But it all comes down to the homeowners. And that's what everything's based on. I got to get out of here. Sorry to be a panel.
No, no, thanks for your, thanks for your presentation. It makes a lot of sense. It's fine.
You did fine.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your time.
Okay.
Thank you for coming in.
All right, I don't know. Again, we're, we don't have a quorum in a room to take any action on this tonight, but.
Paul's in the gentleman here.
Right.
I think maybe you you need to find out why.
Right.
What what is Paul's expectation? Because we're probably the least involved party in all of this.
Well.
Between.
I ran into him and he had mentioned that. So I told him, you talk to the town, see if they've got anything. And I'll I'll basically send them back here because you have to start with the water department. This is what, what, these are the fees that you're asking to be waived. Start with them and ask if they can waive them.
Well, let's connect.
All of it.
Let's connect with him because again, we're the least party involved in all of this, right? We're we're, we didn't contaminate anything, right? And and we haven't received the the tax revenue and. I I fully appreciate where he's coming from, but the next thing is that if we do waive something like that, all the other ratepayers are going to say.
That's that's my concern, right?
Right. So and that might be probably some that actually agree with it, say, you know, I I can live with that to a certain extent because they feel the pain because they're committed to the community. But we can't just decide on that, right?
All right, excellent.
Across the board.
Great hike. We have to have any.
Right, exactly.
They're going to go back and say, well, you waived all these people's twenty six hundred dollars.
Right.
We were definitely the wrong party to talk to right now, in my opinion. So I don't know why.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I agree. I'd like to know more from what, what, what's the town's perspective on all this?
Said it was basically just a place to start.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
And he gets a letter and then. If it's the direction we go in, that we're, you know. We're, you know, we're not going to waive any fees and. And then he goes back to the town and and that's.
I'd just say to give him the runaround like that.
I do too.
Right, so.
I I agree.
I just think I don't have all the information in front of me.
And I'm not saying Paul or anybody did anything wrong. I just, I agree, we don't have the information.
Right. And before we go setting possibly a precedent-setting decision here. That's the other thing I don't know is, is this just a one or two done and that's it? That's not such a concern, but, you know, if we've got a hundred other well owners saying. Hey, I want to connect if it's free. You know, that that's a different animal there. So.
And I agree.
Yeah.
I mean, Saint. I don't know if it's a different.
Who knows who it could be? I mean, we can't single out anybody, but.
Mainland extension fees, granted, they were the, they were the polluter, but they paid, made their extension fees, entrance fees, SDC charters. We did not waive a single thing for St. Colby and they hooked up. A bunch.
Right. And and you know.
John's trying to say something.
Okay, John, you want to comment on anything?
Yeah, I mean, I, I question why that person was sent to us as well. I mean, make no mistake, there's, there's really not a decision to be made with regard to waiving the fee. It's a charity. At that point, it has nothing to do with us. We would be putting the burden on the rest of the ratepayers, as small as it is for this one case. You're right. I think it would, I think. You know, it would be unfair to anybody else who asked for it or who didn't even know that they could ask for it. To grant that to one person. Now, I think he should get his connection fee paid. But he's barking up the wrong tree as far as I'm concerned.
Right. And and you know. Right now, his water quality is better than what's in our system. So. I don't know why the request is here. It's for an, in a surety in the future that contamination doesn't come to him, but.
Yeah, I don't know who we spoke to there about the whole sludge of PFAS that come whaling through his yard. But it sounds like they put the fear of God in him.
I think so.
Maybe rightfully so. I don't know.
And so maybe let's do that. Maybe we can put an action item in. That that you you can connect, just to make sure we don't drop the ball on this. Put an action item in that you got to connect with the town.
Yep. Yeah. Amanda, you on, you. You following us on this?
I am. I'm good. Thank you.
All right, just making sure. All right, just making sure. Yeah, so may maybe get a little more information from Paul about what's going on. All right. I mean, I I do.
If if he's not gonna get anywhere with this. Maybe we could take a different approach. Maybe we could just put up a GoFundMe page. Tell a story, let him tell a story. You know, we have enough, I think, connections through. Uh, you know, the network at town. It could be something like that. We could do form potentially.
Yeah, it's a good thought. All right. So, um. See where we were left to move on to. Yeah, minutes. I I think we gotta.
Yeah.
We gotta pass on the minutes because we don't have a forum in a room again. We can't make any.
Okay, I do. On uh. What is that, the June twenty first? No, I don't know.
You got the public hearing.
July twenty first.
Yeah.
July twenty first, on the second, no, on the third page. Line thirty eight, um. Vice Chairman Funtrein expressed that if the vessel fails testing, comma, was it comma missing? Seven twenty one, page three.
Yeah.
Well, seven and eight update, down like line thirty seven. Sorry, Chairman Funtrein expressed if the vessel fails testing, comma, the plane. Will have to be reconsidered, not reconfigured. Um, and I think I said a little bit more than that, but basically my point was that. If we put the plant, the vessel in place and we test it and it fails, I mean, you think about ripping it back out or getting it repaired on site. And that might affect the construction progress as well and. But at least reconsidered.
Reconsidered, yes.
Is closer to than reconfigured. That's the only thing really.
Well, these are gonna get circulated at the next uh board meeting packet and uh. At least that way we'll have that comment in there, so that's good. John, while we're at it, I didn't know if you had any comments on the minutes. I know we can't approve them tonight, but if there's any edits in there that you you wanna ma- have made. For the next uh Board of Commissioners meeting. I think you're muted.
Working on it. Yeah, no, I did not get through the minutes. Apologies.
All right. So that that's fine, then we should, we'll, we'll table these. We have to table these till the next um. For the next meeting anyway, so um. So we'll do that. Uh, so that brings us. The next one, action items. All right. So let's go down to the action items. Little slow because I get everything on computer here. Uh, number two, I think that's just an ongoing one, right? Uh, number thirteen, uh, templates for disaster recovery policy and data retention. Where does that stand? You know where that's at? They were in the packet, right? Again, partially. Yeah.
Words, but maybe Jill or Ron.
Are we looking for that to be reviewed and officially approved by the board?
I think so. Um, comments, we can probably, we don't actually have to officially, we have to officially, right?
No, it was administrative.
Yeah.
Okay.
So just looking for comments.
Yes, and you've seen him a couple times already. Michelle has sent him out already a couple times. This is just the final version that was implemented, which. There wasn't a ton of changes.
I think I had comments on one of them, but I can't remember.
The main thing is, do we have? A, an action plan in place if there is a compromise. Right? You know, we have credit card information, right? We have, we have, we have addresses and and names and.
We don't have credit card.
We don't.
We don't yet.
Not a third party company.
Right. But we may have, right? But either way, we have at least addresses and names, right? And a couple of other things. I mean, we're certainly not Facebook, right, or Google. So. T-Mobile, T-Mobile for that matter, almost screwed up really early, but.
They have been approved on Primax as well.
They have been, okay.
So I am, I actually just attended the EPA sponsored cybersecurity training. Uh, towards the la- la- in the last week. And one of the things that I took out of it was online SCADA systems. Could be very um susceptible to attack. So I think one of the things you really wanna focus on is, you know, if that's gonna be down. How you could operate by hand until such time that they could be brought back up and how long would it take to bring them back up?
Right, are they even? So our SCADA system is that on the internet or is that, because we have direct cable networking too, right?
So I'm gonna say this correctly. We have a. It's not on the internet. We have to go through. Log me in. I was, I was thinking, but that's the remote access, right?
Yeah, that, that sort of thing is very susceptible. I was recently converted from LogMeIn uh to a Cisco uh VPN, Cisco AnyConnect. I found out too, Ron, that um. There's a cybersecurity and infrastructures, something administration, CISA. It's actually a government organization. That will support. Basically, anybody. It says municipalities, it says private uh companies that are involved in infrastructure. I'm gonna have them do a um. I wanna say an audit, but they have different things that they can do. Um, to see where you're at in terms of the defenses and it's completely free.
Yeah, we did. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. We did do something like that. We went through the APA. It was the uh risk assessment, uh, I wanna call it, so it was a couple of months back.
Okay.
And so we did that and we actually developed a. We do the plan and we actually combined it into our.
Cybersecurity Disaster Recovery Plan.
Thank you. With a emergency manager plan, that's all one book now. So with any kind of a. Whether it's a disaster or not even cybersecurity, but you 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 look for the plan, you you program it up and it's, it's got everything in it.
All right, I'll try to spend some time, take a look at it. You said Michelle sent it out?
It's in the uh back of the board packet. Yep, and additional information.
Well, I don't have a full plan, so we'll.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The emergency plan, we'll, we can get the board the full emergency plan that actually has. All of that in it.
Okay.
Short read.
I I did read it and and I mean, I agree with uh with John. It might be a good idea and I appreciate that we have maybe already done that. But we actually had, in 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 my business right now, we had several large, large customers. Uh, that have been customers of ransomware, just like the last six months. Like four large customers, food processing plants, cheese manufacturers and 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 and. And a liquor distributor, that was kind of a hard hit, but. But no, but I mean, those are staple large corporate companies and and they have, you know, standing IT departments. And I, actually, the whole um cybersecurity thing has been actually brought forth, forward in front of me last, last spring. By by one of our neighbors here in town that was very concerned about it. And um. When, when are these like scenarios? Like, is actually somebody really trying or has somebody really tried to penetrate?
Somebody is.
Our defenses?
Like, we just had this done. Michelle's gonna set up, it's gonna be regular training where they come in and they try and trip us up or, you know. You send something out and so it's, it's something that's gonna be ongoing.
That, and that's what I do with IT.
Yeah, so we're sending right now, like, we have somebody that sends like, you know, fake phishing emails, like phishing emails that are malicious.
I don't know how often, but yeah.
We do, because that is actually, we do that at our work right now and.
It's part of what's been fully put out there for the employees as well.
See if they click on a bad link and, yeah.
And you'd be surprised. We have everybody in their brother clicking, very smart people.
Wow.
Thankfully, they're, they're fake phishing emails, right? So they're, they're not dangerous, but they they do expose how weak an organization is. Okay.
All right, so. There's no more discussion on that. I guess we'll like, leave that item there or um should we close out? Is it? Well, I think we still wanna look into it, right? So we'll leave it there.
John, why don't you share those contacts anyway with, you know, with with staff and we can, you know, maybe compare models a little bit?
Absolutely.
Right, and and see if it's. I don't, it really has me a little bit.
I mean, it'll be helpful, sure.
Yep.
Yeah, we have, we have just.
I'm starting the process now myself, so um, you know, it's, it's something that I've, I've worked on, you know. Since it started to become a problem, but um, you know, I just felt like I'm getting an awful lot more of these emails lately. And it's not by accident. These guys are no longer, you know, somebody sitting in their mother's basement. They're companies. And they're doing business in countries we can't go get them. So, you know, it's, and now, you know, I've been hit a couple of times. And I've always had the backup to restore and I've always had the procedures in plan to restore within a couple of days. But now they're going out and they're saying, well, we're gonna steal your customer's information and put it out there and make you look bad. So they're kind of adding layers to the whole thing. And that's the only reason why, you know, I kind of said, well. I I've, I've heard a little bit about this recently and and maybe it could be helpful. I don't know.
Well, and it goes beyond IT. We have cases um right now where our customers are receiving invoices from third parties. Uh, made up to look like ours. Right, so, so we have third parties sending invoices to our customers, known customers. And they make them look like they're coming from us, but they're not. And bank account information, of course, is not.
This is your employment, not MBD.
No, 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 I'm sorry.
Just making sure.
So, so it's, 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 some of that is quite simple stuff, right? It's not, it's not technological stuff. It's, it's social attacks, right? Social engineering attacks, attacks and and. And I just wanna make sure we, we talk about those as well, right? Not just, don't click on that link, but also look a little closer who that invoice is coming from compared with a prior known good invoice, right? As the, as the account information is the same, or is it a different bank account? If so.
Just put out a whole memo on that too and examples of what the difference are. We went through cybersecurity. Every single one of us went through cybersecurity training.
That's great.
Primax.
Great, that's good.
Yep.
All right, okay, so move on uh the next um action item. Twenty-three graphs of the PFAS results in the distribution system. When do you think um the next testing is, next month is? Are we graphing those or just tabulating?
So I do have graphs and I can, I can share those with the board. I'll, I'll actually send them out. I don't do it till, first set tomorrow. So he just sent.
That's not the distribution system.
I apologize. That is the filter. So I'm sidetracked, yeah.
Okay, all right.
I apologize on that.
We didn't talk about graphing the distribution system, or did we? Trying to remember that.
I don't have some there and spreadsheets that other cars, it's just we don't have a ton of data.
Right, I mean, how many times have we tested? Like, three times? The distribution system, four?
Four, I think.
And I think we're pretty consistent, like on the north side of town, everything's non-detect, then. As, as you come south, because the other wells are in the south, that they get, we get more PFAS, right? All right, so we'll just leave that on there. Um, cost of service study? Then you already talked about that.
I did, and I can uh, so I'm gonna send that letter out tomorrow and it seems like. It's gonna take that long to, to get, to get it done and and uh. I have no number stuck in my mind. For completion on it, but.
Yeah, I'd be curious.
Yeah.
All right. Um, so I. Guess number thirty-six, uh, we did have the August salt committee meeting. So um. I guess we can. Take this off the list, number thirty-six. Although obviously I know we're, you know, the salt mitigation thing is gonna be an ongoing thing. I don't know that we have to have it as an action item or what, what, what's your feeling on that? I don't think we're gonna forget about it if we don't have it.
Have it.
Yeah.
So I'd almost leave it up there just as a, a tickler that just uh.
Yeah.
I'd be fine with leaving it up there just to, you know, if we say one, you know, agree.
Okay.
How many times do we want to meet during the winter months or or?
Yeah, you know, I don't know. I don't know if we need to talk about that now or just the fact that we're gonna leave this on, on the list, so. So let's leave that on the list, Amanda, number thirty-six. I think I just told you to take it off, but why don't we leave it there? Uh, maybe you can. We can, uh, I think she just hides them anyway. She doesn't actually delete anything, but.
I just hide them, so if they need to come back, they're there.
So if we ever want.
They're marked with which meeting we close them on, if you ever need to review for some reason.
Right. Uh, well, since this one says August two thousand twenty-one, which we already did, maybe we close this one out and create a new one that just says um. I don't know, um, ongoing salt mitigation committee meetings.
Okay.
You wanna do that instead?
Sure.
Instead of changing this one, the wording, so we'll just, we'll just, you know, we'll, we'll be done with number thirty-six and then just add a new one on. And that'll be like a recurring one that's gonna keep us um to remember that we gotta keep making progress and scheduling these meetings. As an ongoing thing. Number thirty-seven, decision criteria, moving forward with alternative water sources. I think we gotta keep that one on, because. I think we're gonna hopefully have more discussions on that in the um, in the future.
Yep.
Um, number thirty-nine, any update on the status of the booster station, Turkey Hill Booster Station and the noise issue?
I gotta, gotta get back on that. We, other than uh. We did. Put some insulation along the. The gap between where the steel. Uh, frame meets the concrete.
Right.
And we actually did try some uh insulation, like skirting. I don't have what the noise, if, if made a reduction or not, we've been kind of bouncing around a lot, but.
Has the butter um called or questioned anything in the?
Not since the last update, so I I haven't heard from them, but I do still wanna. Get all that, that insulation up, take some more noise readings, and then if it does help, we wanna put some skirting up to, to.
Right, so there is more um insulating that you wanna do.
This will be about the end of it, but yeah, I I just don't have any readings where, if it helped out.
All right.
I imagine it's gonna help out some, but.
That's good. That's helpful. Um, number forty, open house at Wells four and five, and I know that kind of. Might as well hit that one on the agenda item too at the same time. Um, so in light of COVID, I guess there was some question about, do we want to do this? My personal thought was. Maybe, maybe we wanna hold off and have it, have an open house at Wells seven and eight. Since we kind of already did one at Wells four and five. I know we didn't invite everybody that we wanted to and I apologize to anybody listening to this right now for being excluded from that invitation. It was just an oversight on our part. Was it nothing intentional?
Well, also it was specific purpose, but.
Right, it was more for legislative action and and.
That was immediate.
You know, there, there, there were some in the um general public that were involved in that aspect of it too and. I think we all know specifically who and I have apologized, uh, you know, because of that, so um.
Okay. But we talked before about having a combined open house, right? Certainly four and five, which we could do next summer, right? And summertime usually is lower COVID rates, right, than the cold season. So.
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine with, with uh seven, eight as well. I, 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 that was one we never got to do an open house.
At the original uh.
The original.
Home station?
We were kind of thrown right into putting it online and, and having four and five. Shut down at that point because of PFAS, so we were really uh at the, the beginning stages of all of this PFAS with it.
Yeah.
Kind of was overshadowed by that, so I think it'd be a nice uh, nice one to do an open house at.
Okay. Any thoughts on that, John, before we move on?
No, I mean, I, I'm not, it sounds like, it sounds.
No, I mean, I, I'm not, it sounds like, it sounds like you guys know a lot more about this than I do. In terms of a reason to have a second open house and whatever you want to do with open houses is finally.
Okay. All right. So we'll leave that one on. Number forty-one, I think we want to leave on. I'm actually wondering if we want to bring number forty-one as an agenda item or, or a work session. It says to be included in a work session. Maybe we do that instead first. Are we planning an uh, another work session to talk about the, the new source alternatives and what, what, what's the status on that? Is that just kind of waiting? It's kind of just sort of in our ballpark, right? It's, it's in our balls.
You're waiting. We're waiting on the
Cost of service.
Service study, but
That's right.
It might be better in a work session, I think.
Yeah.
That way it's, it's just that, you know, we can talk about the different scenarios.
Because this is more of like a an overall policy that we're looking at, like a, you know, how are we going to um, handle? Do we want to factor in irrigation demand into our system development charges and things like that, or? Uh, at least that's kind of what, what my thought process is. May, maybe we should talk about that a little further.
Well, maybe we don't need to talk about it. I mean, we brought our case forth today. Uh, you know, Emery and Gary can, uh, not Emery and Gary, I'm sorry, Underwood can listen to the meeting today. They can pick up a lot of information, thoughts we already had.
Yeah.
Maybe we can have to make a proposal.
A proposal, we might have
I was just gonna say that, Wolf, yeah. I, I totally agree. I think rather than a spitball, and we should have, have it contracted out professionally, like you said. I think it's a good idea.
I mean, the main thoughts have been captured today, right? So much for me too. And we can certainly talk about it as they present their, their proposal and, and polish it a little bit, but I'm not sure.
Yeah. I mean, we can discuss it as in a work session when they present it, I guess.
Yeah.
All right. So um, we'll leave that there. Do we need to, is there any expectation of a timeframe on this? When, how we want to bring this back around again or um?
Seems to be like we probably got all winter, given the construction season, right?
Yeah.
How many requests are we getting between now and Christmas?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
So I can ask, ask Keith for proposal on this.
All right. And if, if he, if, if he's wants any further detail on it, you know, I'm sure he's gonna be available at the next um, meeting that we can talk about that. Um, okay. So what's next after action items?
Uh, real business for, for, well, did that new business?
Yeah. So I guess we're up to new business. Anybody have any new business to present? I don't have anything myself. If there's no new business, so we can move on to superintendent report?
All right. Just a couple of things. And most of it, we I write things down and we talk about it during the meeting, so it doesn't but uh, Thursday, uh, this Thursday, we're gonna, uh, N H D S will be down. We're gonna be doing our sanitary survey. It involves of uh, walking through all of our facilities, all of our well, home houses and stuff and seeing if they see anything that's out of whack or needs to be tidied up. Met with uh, Kyle and Lori on Friday. We talked about signage and all of that for the uh, within the well health protection area. And uh, last thing is I'm, I'm gonna be on vacation uh, starting the twenty-seventh through Columbus Day.
Getting some camping in.
I actually got a lead copper sampling. We're doing our second round of the last week of September. Well, he's gonna be on vacation, but um, it's all set up. So that'll be our second round and then we can go to annually instead, instead of twice this year, meaning sixty samples each time. We can go to once a year, thirty. It's somewhat easier.
Good. Now is that gonna come back around again when we put, every time we put a new treatment plan online, are we gonna be?
It's not the treatment plan. It's the new well for our
Oh, it's the new well. All right.
New source.
Okay.
Have it again with, with mine.
Yep.
So I, the reason I asked that
Get it to go thirty days?
Is um,
Thirty days.
I, I do, as you probably know, I do a lot of work in Massachusetts and when you, when you just add a treatment component on, just putting treatment on the same well requires you to do a whole nother double round of lead and coppers again. So luckily we're not in Massachusetts, I guess. Um, I'm, I'm gonna be gone most of November, but I still will be able to do, I'll have to do remote participation. I'm gonna be in South Carolina for like three weeks. Um, so it's kind of partly a vacation, but also a working. You know, I had one week vacation and then another week was gonna go by and then we're gonna go back for Thanksgiving. So I said, we might as well just stay there. So I still will be able to, to, I plan on being, you know, available for the November meeting, but probably through Zoom. So hopefully we can have a quorum in the room with some other commissioners, but um, you know, is that an action item we want to talk about? Because that um, the, there's a, I guess the rule is we have to have a quorum in the room in order to be able to make uh, voting decisions. And that's why we didn't have that ability tonight, but um, I, I don't know. I, I think maybe we want to get um, a more confirmation of a legal interpretation on what constitutes an emergency. The way
In my email that, that uh, Carrie sent us way back, she resubbed me that email and
Yeah.
I wanted to get, and that says the emergency situation is something that it's business that needs to be dealt with. It's not individual, having an emergency situation.
But that's not an email chain that I responded to today. It doesn't say it in there at all.
And it says at the discretion of the chair.
There might be different email threads then, but the one that I respond, when, when I, this July, when I went through that exercise with her with the board and copy as a privilege, that's why I was like, okay, it was not a meeting, it's privileged.
Right.
And I'm probably talking about this here. But either way, I mean, it was, it was legal counsel about what constitutes a meeting and what, what requirements are there and, and in, in that it was just called an emergency. It wasn't specified what kind of emergency. Did not delineate, you know, distinguish between a commissioner being stuck on, on an airport or something like that and then not making it home on time to attend a meeting in person or the business of the district, didn't distinguish between that at all.
So my point is, I don't know if this warrants like speaking to one of our reps and maybe putting a bill out there because so during the, the, I'm just saying this for the one or two people that might be watching is uh, when the, when the state of emergency existed for COVID, we were able to do all remote participation instead of having to come together and being together during COVID like this, right? So now that the emergency is lifted, there's a requirement that an official meeting has to have three of us in the room to be able to vote on things, which we only have two in the room right now. A couple of commissioners weren't feeling well today for various reasons. So it's almost like by not having this emergency um, situation in, in force anymore, it, it almost makes the commissioners that don't feel, that feel under the weather, feel like they want, they need to come and participate. Which is ridiculous. I wouldn't want anybody in here that's not feeling well. But at the same time, that limits us to what we can do. So everything worked, I think extraordinarily better having everybody have remote participation through Zoom. You still were here in the office. There's still an opportunity for the public to come and talk. We're still all five commissioners present, whether it's on Zoom or in person. Why would that have to change? It seems to work better that way. It's more flexible.
I think it's, totally understand, totally agree, but it's just the law.
I know. So that's what I'm saying. Maybe we need to change the law, you know? So I, I don't know.
Something gets changed, but soon.
Maybe I'll talk to one of the reps about it and see if, if they agree or not.
Filing the period for
I know.
Couple of days ago.
It's, it's over for now, but
So, Don, to clarify, there is an RSA about or that defines what an emergency would be.
Right.
That's, that's what we need to, we need to understand it a little bit better yet, because I'm really tired of having this discussion, you know, one
Because if it's up to the chair, I'll, I'll call an emergency, but I need to make sure I'm in compliance.
It's not. Um, it's an emergency means an immediate action is imperative and the physical presence of a quorum is not reasonably practical.
Yeah, I can make a case for that.
So, anyway. All right.
I, I do have a question about the superintendent's report. I believe we had at least one, if not two two two, uh, sorry, Europeans do it like that. So two um, what are main breaks in the last month? I know we had one about a week ago.
You have, yeah. What were they?
Construction again.
Yeah, right. The, the, what we believe it was um, in the area of where the new roundabouts going. Um, okay. That was a, actually relatively quick fix. Just kind of a section of pipe about two foot long and repair clamps and water was restored. And I want to say the other one was an entrance, I believe.
So I'll tell Marty.
Yes.
Actually, that was um, rephrase that. That wasn't an entrance. That was a break is in your neighborhood for uh, the installing the cable.
Oh.
They, they sent the
Five optics.
Underground piercing tool through the line.
Okay. All right. So neither of them were due to
That was it. But I think, no, it was not due to aging, aging or like that.
Okay.
Okay.
I think that was a service. I think they shot it through the service for that um, for the house, the house, but we had to shut the main down to make that repair.
I kind of appreciated that you took me out of that shutdown as a commissioner, because I know it was not shut down.
Just kidding. Sometimes it works out.
Yeah.
Just kidding.
All right. So uh, is that the end of our um, new business superintendent report? Any questions from the press and public? I don't know if anybody's on. You know, we got Dave, our foreman out there, supervisor or whatever. I forget what his title is, but that's what it is. I'm sorry.
You're unmuted if you want to say hi.
His head's getting bigger from Wolf coming on us cooking all the time.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I don't have much to say. I've got my whole family over. So thanks for the opportunity.
Thanks for tuning in. All right. So the next regular meeting is um, October eighteenth. And um, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Right. Second mo- motion by Wolf, second by John.
An official emotion.
And I guess unofficially, we're gonna
That's right. Yeah. We're not in a meeting, so.
So
Oh, God, did we close the meeting?
So let's just continue it to next month, I guess. I don't know.
Somebody's gonna bring us to court for that.
Yeah, right. All right. So the meeting's closed. Uh, thanks. And again, thanks, uh, Miramac TV and we'll um, we'll uh, check in with you guys next month.